One o'clock hour and it is time to call the special session budget workshop of Delmarque County into session. Please call and take roll.
Supervisor Short.
I'm here.
Supervisor Borges.
I am here.
Supervisor Starkey.
Here.
Supervisor Howard. Chair Wilson.
Here.
And Supervisor Short, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
All right.
And lead us off, we have probation chief, Wally Raymond.
Good afternoon, board. I'll introduce right now my assistant chief, Jordan Anderson, my probation services manager, Christine Oxford there here as well. What I'll be doing today is giving a brief walkthrough and overview of our budget. And I'll pause for questions after I get through that portion. I have received questions from some board members already, and so after that first little pause, I'll dive into answering some of those. Call it the lightning round and provide some brief answers to those. And that should leave us plenty of time for questions on anything and everything after that as well, any follow-ups or other questions. So, probation's budget.
Can I stop you? Are you going to do reentry and then probation or probation and then reentry?
It's going to be both.
Okay.
Probation, the core budgets that we've got are two four four and two four three, which cover probation services and reentry services.
Okay, thank you.
So this is our bottom line. Overall, we have six point eight million in expenditures budgeted or proposed. Four point one million in revenue, and that leaves a net county cost of two point six million across both of those budget units. Probation specifically, and this covers adult probation, juvenile probation, this is the two four four budget. It covers core probation services that we provide with statutory mandates, support to the court and supervision. Total expenses for the two four four budget are just over five million in the proposed budget. Offsetting revenue for that's three point five and our net cost is one point four six, as you can see there. Included in that as well, pre-trial services is one of the adult programs that we run in the adult side. That's included in that budget. Our truancy program, our agreement with the school district and our truancy officers also included in this budget as well. Support services, all our legal clerk staff, finance staff or analysts are included in this budget as well. The vast majority, as you can see, of this budget is staff, this is payroll, almost fifty percent. This is the reentry budget, this is two four three. It covers detention for our youth as well as the youth opportunity center. You can see the expenses, one point eight and offsetting revenue, six hundred and forty seven thousand there and a net cost of one point one. And again, as is the case in our two four four budget, the vast majority of those costs are our staff and personnel. So this dives into a couple of the other budget and revenue lines that we have. This will answer a couple of the different questions that I've received as well. Starting with the CYA, this is a legacy budget, this has been around since the CYA days, which go back a long, long time ago. Most recently, this budget line was used for one specific youth that was detained by the court in order to participate in a specific program in custody. That is not funded for all intents and purposes at this point, that youth has been released, so we're no longer utilizing that. However, there is a, there's a cost from using that budget line essentially. So those costs that we pay the auditor, admin, things like that to maintain that and utilize those budget lines carry over a year or two after the fact. And so you see, I think it was sixteen hundred dollars in that budget currently. SB eight twenty-three is attached to DJJ realignment, the subsequent entity to CYA. So DJJ realignment essentially puts all the onus and responsibility for seven oh seven B youth offenders on the counties. So if, for instance, if a young person is convicted of murder, it is no longer the case that we send these kids to state custody. We are responsible for housing them ourselves. So the DJJ realignment SB eight twenty-three line is funding that the state has allocated for Delmarque County based on our metrics. Currently, that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year. That's going into a fund that's set aside for those specific cases. Thankfully, we've not had any of those thus far, but that's what that money is set aside for. SB one sixty-three, this is based on an MOU for wraparound services. We participate in that along with DHHS, and so that's revenue and expenditures for us. Our staff time goes out to participate in those wraparound services. JJCPA, this is AB nineteen thirteen, otherwise known as the Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act. This is juvenile related revenue that comes into the county again, based on our county metrics. And this is tied in with the YOBG funds, youthful offender block grant. That's put together in a consolidated plan every year by the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council and submitted to the state. Those funds are then expended in line with that plan. Currently, that plan is really focused on the youth opportunity center, and so the vast majority of those funds, both of those lines, JJCPA and YOBAG, are going to pay for programming and other associated costs with that opportunity center. SB nine thirty-three, this is revenue that comes in, this is passed through, through DHHS to us to pay for our placement kids. So if a kid that is on probation is placed in a foster home, they're not group homes anymore. But those homes, we still have an obligation to visit to maintain case management over those. And so the SB nine thirty-three budget, that line is to offset those costs. Couple other budget and revenue lines and things in there. AB one oh nine, these are mostly focused on adult. AB one oh nine was adult realignment back in two thousand and eleven. That allocation for probation comes out of our community corrections partnership plan every year. We are, probation is the pass-through for those funds into the county. And so you'll see a fairly significant amount of revenue coming in, but a lot of that gets passed out to the sheriff's office, to DHHS for programs and services, district attorney, public defender, all of those entities get AB one oh nine funds. And that's in reality, just a small portion of funds that were included in adult realignment in two thousand and eleven. There's more that we don't have anything to do with as well. Total dollars that we get every year is based on a state allocation and a funding formula. Typically, those operate on a three or five year cycle for review. And so once that happens, a state continues to calculate on a year-by-year basis what that allocation is for the county. And then the CCP plan divides that up into the different parts and pieces. MPG mobile probation, this is a grant that we applied for and were awarded. It's a fairly small amount of money, but that you'll see that in our budget as well. That grant lasts until end of fiscal year in twenty-seven, so June of twenty-seven is the grant life for that. We're still working on that, that's going to fund a vehicle, essentially a mobile office. And we'll be taking adult services and as we roll that out, possibly tying in other services as well, North County and South County. So that's the goal of that MPG, and that's what those costs are associated with. CALEMA, that's state funding for felony probation. So that's coming in to assist us in ramping up our adult felony and supervision in general to try and reduce. This goes back to two thousand and nine, try and reduce the population that was going to the state in the prison system. And so that is also based on a state funding formula, and we get those numbers annually on what our allocation will be. SB one twenty-nine, this is pre-trial revenue, this is based on an MOU with the courts. This came up this year, as the board, you should be aware, I included you in my letters to the courts. We were able to finalize that and we are still operating on a now two-year MOU. And that program, SB one twenty-nine, is that pre-trial program, and that'll continue to be funded to varying levels fully this year, a little bit less next year unless the courts can find some more money. And so anything SB one twenty-nine related, that's what that is. AB eighteen sixty-nine, the state took action and eliminated all fines and fees for adult criminal defendants and offenders. And so the eighteen sixty-nine is backfill revenue for that loss of fines and fees that the county was seeing. I have no idea on what the life expectancy is of that funding, it's going to depend on how the state manages its budget and when they say they won't give us any more. Some impacts on our budget, one of the biggest is typically vacancies. So we plan our budget each year for our staffing chart, every position is, that is funded, we have to budget for. So once we get to the end of the year and we have vacancies, probably the biggest impact is the lack of expenditures in that, in that line. And so what you'll see at times is sometimes money being pulled out of payroll to pay for other things. But a lot of times that is unspent general funds as well. Detention, one of the challenges we face in budgeting is that's always based on projections. That was when we started utilizing detention contracts to begin with, and it continues to be the biggest challenge. We plan for, plan for average daily population, basically, and we live with reality. So far, we've not been bitten the butt by that, and that's turned out well. Our population that's been in custody and detained has been smaller than our projected ADP from past years. But that's one of those things that we struggle with and keep an eye on on a regular basis. Last, big impact on budget is state controls, whether that's mandates ordered by the state for us to do something specific or whether that's impacts on state budget that then trickle down to us. And you see that through the one oh nine, eighteen sixty-nine, one sixty-three, all of the different state-funded projects, mandates, changes. That's something that we have to live with on a year-by-year basis as well, and that has a significant impact on us. Projects and goals for us for this next year, continued development of the opportunity center is a primary, primary goal for that, for us. It's a significant lift. I've described it multiple times as trying to push start a manual car going uphill. And if you ever have experience trying to push start a manual car, it's hard enough as it is. Trying to push one uphill, even if all the parts and pieces are there, that's, that's a challenge. We're starting to see some movement there, so we're happy with that, and we can talk about that later. A big piece of that is capital improvements on the building, the facility. We do have funds that came in, I believe, two years ago, two to three years ago, that were earmarked for juvenile institutions that was intended on expanding program space and making it more home-like in a sense. And so as part of the whole process of closing down juvenile hall, proposing the opportunity center, we actually reached out to the state to confirm that we could still utilize those funds, and they said that we could. So those are set aside, and that will fund our capital improvement to the, to the building to deal with doors, paint, flooring. Again, make it much more conducive to having families, kids in that facility and a little bit less like a juvenile hall. Case management system, we have been working on this project probably since twenty-one, I think it was. Because of different staffing challenges and different departments, it's just taken quite a, quite a bit of time to get to. We are eyeball deep in that right now, utilizing the same company that the county has tapped for other systems, we're working with Tyler Technologies. And that is a big lift, especially when we don't have a lot of people to go around and have to keep doing all the normal things. So that's one of the big projects and goals for this year is to finally, put a pin is probably the, a misnomer because there's always going to be work there, but get that done and rolled out as well as an assessment tool that goes along with that. We've been utilizing the same company for our assessment tools for adult and juvenile offenders, and we're going to be jumping to another company that a lot of northern counties in California are using, so that's a part of that rollout as well. Maintenance of our, our probation services and rebuilding the team, it's, when you have as many vacancies as we have had and still do, that's a significant concern and goal. We are seeing an uptick in our applicants, so that's a good thing for us. We've got several people in background for DPO, and we're still running recruitments for other vacant positions as well. Mobile probation I spoke about already, and that's still on the radar. Prop sixty-four is another grant. We'll actually probably see little budget impact on our own budget through that. But it does take a significant amount of time to try and ramrod that project and work with our project manager and keep it pointed in the right direction. So that'll be an ongoing goal and project for us through the year. So with that overview, I'll pause, and I, again, I do have a list of questions and I'll go into those next. But if anything comes or sparks out of what I've already said, any questions from that?
Any questions on board?
So I did present my questions, but do you mind if I just ask them? Or would you rather just, so then the board can hear the questions that I'm asking?
However you'd like, I do have them written down here, and I was planning on rolling into that next.
Yeah, no, I, I'd like to do it that way, start with reentry if we could. So currently you have five extra, five positions plus one extra help position as well as a vacant supervising DPO position. And has that been pretty fully staffed that last year, and you're anticipating that same fully staffed this next year?
Yes.
I appreciate you putting that out, thank you. Like, my question is, is that on the projected request for salaries, it's up three hundred thousand. And so I'm just kind of curious, what do you anticipate that's going to increase those, that salary? Not three hundred thousand, one hundred thousand, what do you anticipate that extra hundred thousand? Do we authorize raises that I'm not aware of, or is there other things that calculate into that figure?
I think the important, one important thing to note is you have to compare proposed budget with actual, or proposed with proposed. Comparing actual with proposed is going to take us in the wrong direction, just overall and generally.
Okay, and that's fair.
You set this up at the beginning, asking if that's going to continue to be fully staffed, if that's the anticipation. And so I'd say the answer to your question is, a lot of that's outside of my control. There hasn't been any raises that you are unaware of. There were raises given as part of the restructure, and so that had a direct impact because as JCOs, we were paying them a different rate than we are as ROs. And so generally, the increase in payroll isn't necessarily of our doing or our control. That's going to be based on their, their salaries that have been approved by the board.
Okay, so that's, I'm starting to learn that my understanding is that when people plug in their payroll salaries, that's a number that's given to them by the auditor's office?
Yes.
Okay. The overtime, is that the same for overtime? Because I notice that, you know, you're right, I can't really go off the year-to-date. But to go thirty-five thousand when this year, year-to-date has only been eighteen, is that just because you're going to overtime? Or you're going to recommend it based on what the auditor controller has given you those figures?
So no, overtime would be more our control. We're still going to base it on the salaries that we've, we've gotten and other benefits, things like that. But overtime specifically is going to be an estimation on our part. We still have vacations, sick time, things like that, that we have to account for. And so we try not to go in the red on overtime, that's something that is pretty important to me.
Absolutely, and especially since you've kind of controlled the workload now, where it's, you know, it's, could be, it's not always, but it could be a Monday through Friday, eight to five job, but even though you have your transports. The part-time temporary, you're requesting twenty thousand, and I just note that in the height of juvenile hall being fully operational, fully functioning, it was only ten thousand, six hundred. Is there a reason, do you have an interest, what's happening with the part-time temporary, do you have a special project?
So I went back and looked at previous years as well, and that number is inaccurate. What I was seeing for actuals for about a five-year span or so was anywhere between twenty and forty thousand dollars in part-time temp. We typically use those for JCO, part-time or extra help JCOs that would come in and backfill if someone was on vacation, sick, things like that. What we're utilizing that line for now, in addition to that, we do have one extra help staff that stayed on board with us and kept that essentially credentialed, put it that way, so that she could help out at times, but we're utilizing that to pay for program providers as well. So I'm trying to work with HR and figure out how best to compensate folks who are coming in to provide programs for our kids in the opportunity center. The, the most efficient way that we came up with was to bring them on as extra help employees. And so the bulk of that is intended to pay for those folks as they come in and provide programs.
Okay, it seems like that would be more contract work, but if you've worked it out with HR, that's understandable. And then my last question with regard to salaries and benefits, and then I'll pass it on. Is this assigned standby for twenty-seven thousand? How is that, because even again, the year-to-date is nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fourteen. How does somebody, when, why do we have assigned standby for just transporting them to juvenile hall? I mean, how oft, how often are we transporting in the middle of the night to juvenile hall?
I would roughly estimate we're probably getting one, one after-hours call to transport out of county per month at this point.
Okay.
That's a really rough estimate.
And so do you pay that, that standby fee just if they're just on-call, without even getting a call, you, you get, they get paid for that?
Yes.
And no other department does this, so this is why I'm asking, and why, what's the justification for that?
I believe DHHS has on-call assigned standby as well, we're not the only department in the county that does that. We are essentially required to respond twenty-four seven. And according to the MOU, which also dictates the rate at which I pay assigned standby, I can't call somebody back to work if they're not on assigned standby.
Okay.
Just for a transport when that's something that is conceivable and reasonable to expect to happen.
The justification primarily is, is on the science, assigned standby, is that individual is being compensated because they have the inconvenience of they can't leave town, they can't go away. They have to be available to respond when they are called and it's.
Is that a percentage or is that an hourly rate? How is that calculated?
I'd have to check the MOU, I believe, well, flat rate up to a certain amount, but it is, there's also a portion of that calculation that depends on their base pay rate, if I recall correctly.
Okay. The other thing is, is that your salary-to-benefit ratio is eighty-nine point five percent. Is, and I understand you probably get those calculations, I'm sure you plug those all in, but what I'm curious to know, and I, we got new figures. It was ninety-one point one-two percent, but we got new figures, so I redid that and it's eighty-nine point five percent. I do understand that your worker's comp went up about sixty, eighty thousand. But other than that, do you, can you justify why it is that your, your benefits to salary is such a high number, high percentage?
No, I don't determine what benefits are paid to the employees. I can point out that our, the majority of our employees are safety, and so their benefits are going to be higher than your standard employee.
Okay, those are, those are the questions with salary and benefits for now.
Any other questions?
I did have one based off the presentation you gave there, chief. You mentioned the capital improvements to the youth opportunity center and that there was, those funds are just being held. I was just wondering where that money is, where is it being held, where can we see it in the budget?
Honestly, I'd have to dive back in and dig that out, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, is, is it listed kind of like the others are under the grant heading possibly?
I can chime in real quick and help you there. Yeah, so those funds are in the capital improvement budget. We didn't provide that budget unit because we were asked to provide general fund budgets directly, but anything the board wants, I can provide. I do want to clarify one quick thing, I don't do the probation's budget for payroll, that's done in-house. So if there's any questions, I'm, I'll happen to chime in when I can, but Christine's probably their payroll expert, and so any of these questions here, I'm sure she can answer those too.
Okay, then if that's, if, so, under revenue, I'm sorry Darren, I mean, my question is the measure R, and you know, that's kind of coveted money. So you had originally asked for forty-six thousand under the reentry services, and that got increased to a hundred and eleven thousand. At the height of your twenty-one, twenty-two, and I know you, you mentioned actuals can't compare to what's projected, but it was thirty-five thousand. Can you explain with less staff, why we're asking for seventy-six thousand dollars more this year for measure R funds?
Seventy-six thousand dollars more than actuals?
No, yeah, from the actuals from twenty-one, twenty-two.
It's all based on our funded position.
So you have a, some sort of calculations, because you asked for a hundred and eleven thousand in the measure R funds. And when you were fully staffed, fully operational, it was thirty-five thousand. I'm just trying to understand, the increase of seventy-six thousand dollars in measure R funds, it looks like Neil can chime in.
Yeah, I can help out with that. The committee and the board recently approved a vehicle and a refrigerator freezer with measure R funds for the youth opportunity center, so that's the additional amount of money.
Perfect, thank you, I knew there was probably an explanation.
I just got a couple.
I just got a couple of real quick questions for you.
I do have more answers to...
You go right ahead.
All right.
I'll let you go first, you might answer all my questions.
Yeah, and I was thinking some of these might be answered out of the gate. And we've already touched on some of them, so I might have to hesitate a little bit to align my brain. So you can see our org chart up here, and there were a number of questions surrounding payroll. One was how much is paid for in two-four-four. You'll see up there, everything on the left side of your screen. So support services, and then all the staff under Supervisor Rosentrader, Supervisor Johnson. That's support services and probation services. On the right side of your screen is reentry, that's the two-four-three budget. So everything to the left is two-four-four. That last little group to the right, the reentry team, that's two-four-three. Total, that's twenty-three funded positions. I touched on that one already. Salaries, so a question regarding how we fund salaries. We time-study, and so I'm even time-studying at this point. So I think now we've gotten, everybody in the department is filling out time-studies. And so what we're doing is we're drawing down from different projects and other revenue lines to fund specific activities rather, and this is generally, there is a couple of exceptions, rather than fully fund out of any one project code. Question was specific to one oh nine. And when it comes to the adult side, you'll see there, the, the majority of the officer team there is non-existent. Those are four vacant positions out of what should be six. So when you have that high level of vacancies, there's just no way to fund one position to do that specific job, because there's so much else that has to be done because of existing mandates. The closer we are to fully staffed, the more you'll see drawn down out of those different funding sources as that work is done, based on the time-studies. There was a question about reorganizing and considering a reorg of our department. We just did that, and so I'm not really keen on doing it again, since we closed down a whole division and reorganized with the reentry team.
I guess I want to expand upon that question, is that it wasn't so much that to reorganize, but to rethink the operations, and not so much the operations, but the building, right? I mean, that building is costing a hundred and twenty thousand in utilities, eighty, sixty-five thousand in property insurance. You reduce the maintenance, structural improvements from forty to fifteen. And you've said in the past, you haven't said that yet today, is, is how many youth are actually being served in that building? And so my, my thing is, my question really is, are we really logically looking at that building and those expenses if we're only serving twenty youth a month? Could we, would it be, make more economical sense, right? And that's what we're doing here, is trying to, to make sure that we are fiscally responsible. But should we consider a smaller venue for those services if, if we're having, you know, just meetings? If we want to have the basketball, could we just run out the rec gym, those sort of things? So it wasn't the restructuring of the actual organization as much as, should we have that conversation? Where, you know, the expenses to run the reentry unit in the building itself, should that be something that we talk about and perhaps come up with a smaller venue that's not as costly?
That's a very complicated question. You know, one that we spent almost a year discussing up until last October, when the board took action to close down juvenile hall and allow us to continue utilizing that facility for the opportunity center. I, I think it is absolutely responsible that we continue to look at what we are doing and how we are spending the money. I would argue it's a little premature when we're a little less than a year in. And like I said, pushing a car uphill, trying to get it started is not an easy task. Some of the other considerations that I would urge you to think about are that building is going to cost the county whether we're there or not. My operations are going to exist whether the opportunity center is there or not. I still need secure space for holding and processing. I still need space for my juvenile team. I would still like space to be able to use for programs for our kids that we do have on probation, whether we're involved in working with at-risk kids or not. Yeah, there are other resources and places, the rec department has access and facilities that could be used for, for different projects and programs. But there, again, at this point, I'm, I'm a little loathe to jump back into that conversation when I don't think we've had a fair shot to make it what it can be. You know, part of my concern was, how do we utilize the building to the fullest extent possible? I think we're doing a pretty good job right now, and I think that's just going to get better as we end up with more kids there. So that's, again, I don't, I guess I'll shut up.
I think that's, you made an important point there. We're gonna, we're gonna have to maintain that building no matter what. It's our ownership, we're gonna maintain it, there's going to be a cost for doing so, whether it's occupied or not. There's probably ways we could reduce very small increments, costs associated with electricity, for the most part. In order to maintain that building in good working condition, we're gonna have to continue to put money into it. I'd rather see us put money into it with bodies utilizing it as you've already outlined. So I appreciate that observation.
Well, and, and I completely do understand that reasoning. However, when we were first told about this, it was supposed to save the county, you know, five hundred, six hundred thousand. And it's certainly not doing that. You know, currently, I think we are, the projected budget is only saving a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. So it, I think it's worthwhile to keep on the table for down in the future. But I certainly, I'm hearing you loud and clear that you're not willing to have that conversation right now.
I'm willing to have it, I think this might be a hard forum to have it in when we're doing a budget workshop, and there's a lot of things to have. I would also point out, there's no way that I'm only saving the county a hundred thousand dollars when I went from a staff of sixteen people to six?
Well, exactly, but we didn't factor in the custody contracts, out-of-custody transporting the wards, the county fuel and all of that. So when you factor all that in, it actually is only saving us two hundred thousand dollars.
And I'd refer you back to my previous presentations and reports that I, I provided to the board, and that's just not accurate.
Okay, I'm just going by the numbers.
There was a question on two-four-three, so this is the reentry side on the right side of the screen. How many people are included in the payroll? And you can see there that number that is included in payroll, including our extra help employee. Basically, that person gets paid whenever they fill a shift and are doing work for us. That's worked out over the summer to help backfill as folks took vacation. She is employed elsewhere as well, so as the school year picks up, that availability is going to be less on her part. And the need on our part is going to be less as well. Looking at the proposed overtime budget in two-four-three, the proposed budget's actually five thousand dollars less than we asked for last year. And again, I encourage the board, when you're looking at our budgets, actuals are important to determine what our future, future asks are, but apples-to-apples is important. So what is our proposed and our ask for in previous years? And what are we asking for now, and how does that relate to those actual numbers that are coming back? Are we responding to any changes, or are we not responding to changes? And that's an important question too. A lot of these we already hit. Work, there was work comp question. I'm not sure exactly how to answer this. Yes, our costs are going up, that's based on claims. I'm not, I'm not sure whether I can give numbers and things like that. That's probably an HR county council question on...
I wasn't asking for numbers, I was just wanting to, maybe Clint can answer this. Is when, when we have a higher-than-average worker's comp, how, how is that calculated? Is it calculated based on the type of injury, or is it calculated based on the number of claims?
Yeah, I will try to answer it, I'm kind of where Lonnie's at. Risk management covers, handles that for us. But it is based on the three or five prior years' actual claims. So if we have, we have some claims along the way, you know, they're going to add up. And then if we have, and if we continue to have claims, the costs will continue to rise. However, we have situations where we don't have claims for a while and they will come back down again. But they're, but they're a claim, you know, they're driven by actual claims.
For three to five years?
I think it's three to five.
Okay, thank you.
I can clarify that a little bit. The premium for worker's comp is based on exposure, which is your number of FTEs and your losses. I think it's sixty, forty split, and the losses are out over five years. And these are still losses probably being shown from juvenile hall, actual workers and claims that were at juvenile hall.
Another question, we touched on a little bit, assigned standby on-call for the two-four-three budget. We are maintaining on-call because those are our staff that are going to be doing transports if we do get an arrest. One thing to note though, when we were operating twenty-four-seven as juvenile hall, we didn't have a need for on-call because we had staff working. And so you'll see a significant change in the budget from prior years when we were operating as a hall to now, because it just didn't exist, there was no need for it. That was covered well. Couple more general questions that were sent my way. Purchases out of tactical lines, and I believe this was two-four-four budget, but it would to some degree apply to the two-four-three budget as well. Some of the things that we pay for with those dollars, a big one for us is our body camera system. So we run Axon body cameras. Good portion of that cost is the storage that we have. Our standard length of time that we're storing evidence that are captured by those cameras is two years. That's kind of an industry standard mark. And we've got a, it, that system automatically starts to purge once they hit those different marks for different categories. So we are running body cameras on transports. So whenever those occur, we've got hours and hours of video that's uploaded. Our staff in the field are using those as well. We, you can take pictures, different things like that. So that whole system is paid for out of the tactical lines, body cameras and the storage and the evidence system that that's attached to. Duty gear, gear that's issued to my officers is paid for. Body armor, emergency medical equipment that are, is both issued to officers as well as kept in vehicles. Vehicle equipment, so oftentimes if we are putting a cage in a vehicle, we'll pull money out of the tactical lines for that as well. Radios, both for staff and for vehicles. Restraint equipment, we have purchased in the past and still maintain. It's not a regular purchase, but additional restraint equipment outside of handcuffs and shackles for transportation. Firearms maintenance, ammunition. Data pilot was a purchase that we made several years ago. Again, not an ongoing purchase, and I, we have a subscription fee, but I think that's pulled out of a different line. But a purchase like that, it's a computer that'll rip cell phones, that was paid out of tactical as well. So those are some of the examples of what we pay out of those lines.
Does the state ever audit your one-oh-nine purchases?
They have not, I have not heard of them auditing any counties thus far. It's possible they could.
It's not written into the code?
No, it's not as far as I'm aware. It comes up in discussion every couple of years from different, you know, different points. But no county, as far as I'm aware of, has ever been audited on the one-oh-nine funds. A question about our training budget as well. So, training is important. I would argue for probation officers, probation staff, at the very least, it's no less important than training offered to any other law enforcement officer. Our standards that we have to abide by are forty years for deputy probation office, forty years. Thankfully, it's not that, forty hours, forty hours of training. I just had a mild heart attack. Forty hours of training every year for DPOs. JCOs, and we're staying with the standard for our reentry officers, twenty hours a year. So the staff that you saw, the existing staff, not the vacant positions. Existing staff, this upcoming year is four hundred hours of certified training that we have to provide. And that's a minimum training standard. I think it's important that we provide additional training to our staff. You know, we can include all sorts of different things in those certified training hours, but there's all sorts of different training and requirements that are asked of my officers. Placement is one specific one that comes to mind in the juvenile realm. If we have kids that are put in placement, whether that's a group home or any other foster placement, those officers that are managing those cases have to have specific training that the state requires.
If I could just, my question with regard to that was that it's a total of sixty-five thousand from a bunch of different places. So you've got your placement, you've got your AB one-oh-nine, all those different things. My, my question is that the general fund contribution is twenty-five thousand. Is, and, and it's, we're talking small amount of money in the big picture. But my, what I'm trying to say is that all those other revenue sources that you have itemized out, is there a way to reduce the general fund contribution? Even though I'm just, we're only talking twenty-five thousand. But in order to kind of put a little bit more back into the general fund, can that training be offered through all those other sources of revenue? Or is it very specific that under your, you know, AB one-twenty-nine, it can only be this type of training? Is that how that works?
So it, it's almost a yes and yes. Can we look harder at spreading? Yes, do we already? Yes. Are those funds specifically meant to pay for certain things? Yes, and so your, your audit question about one-oh-nine, that's the thing that always comes to mind too. I haven't seen one-oh-nine, for example, audited ever. I don't know if it ever will be. But the thing that comes to mind is if somebody ever does come knocking, did we utilize those funds appropriately within the parameters that the CCP in the county determined and things like that? One-twenty-nine actually is a great example, because that funding is specifically meant to pay for specific training for one specific person. So our pre-trial coordinator is going to go to a conference in January, I believe. And so our budget this year out of that line is meant to pay for her training for that specific position. And so things like that, we can't really dip into, that's not the intent. Other funding sources are a little more flexible, one-oh-nine is more flexible, JJCPA, YOBAG could be. But again, you have adult-specific funding over here, juvenile-specific funding over here. Trying to stay within bounds reasonably is, is the goal. And at the same time, the county has an obligation to provide probation services. And so there's, I, I don't know what the perfect formula is, or how to, you know, how to parse that. But spreading it, I think, is important. I'm not going to argue that we can look at it and continue to look at it, because one, it's important. Two, it's a significant cost, yeah, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, twenty-five thousand out of six million dollar budget isn't a whole lot to shout at, but still, it's, it's a good chunk. Would I like to reduce it? No. You know, we spent a good portion of our general fund training this last year, trying to bring in training both for our staff and others that specifically surrounded mental health and officer wellness this time around.
I just didn't want you to think that I was questioning that you don't need the training. I, I fully support that, I'm just trying to say, where can we penny pinch for the general fund dollars? Because that seems to be what we lack the most of. You've answered the question, so thank you for that.
Absolutely. Regarding two-four-three, there was a question on how we calculate our detention costs. This was based on an average daily population over, I think, a three-year span. And a daily bed rate that we were looking at from Humboldt County, Shasta County, they each have a slightly different bed rate, and we continue to have to work with those counties as they make any adjustments. But our detention cost is the ADP times those bed rates, and that's how we come up with that dollar figure. And that's how we come up with that dollar figure for our contracts. Refrigerator, this goes back to the opportunity center and the request for a refrigerator. As a juvenile hall, we have a walk-in and that was built in as part of the facility. So we have a walk-in fridge and freezer. Our desire would actually be to shut those down. That's one of Jordan's projects on his radar for this coming year is to figure out how to appropriately shut those down in full. So we're not expending utilities on running those when we don't have a need. Our reach-in fridge, which we had for years died, building maintenance tried to figure out how to revive that, didn't work. But at the end of the day, we're still running an opportunity center with kids in there and food is kind of a big thing for kids. Our detention side, we still offer food for our kids that are in detention, whether we're bringing them back and forth or whether they've just been arrested. So having access to some kind of cold storage is important for us to have. And so that's where the, the nature of the request came from this year for the funds to purchase a fridge.
I appreciate that. I, I asked that question. I, and I guess what I was getting at is, you know, how much are we going to be utilizing a kitchen? You know, in the back of my head, I was thinking that we weren't at all. But, you know, bringing that up that we do occasionally house that get arrested prior to them being transported to Humboldt County, it totally makes sense. So I just wanted to ask that question, kind of what the long-term plan is. It's good to hear, you know, that we're going to work on shutting down the, the big walk-in refrigerator freezer. So that makes a lot of sense to me. So thank you.
And I'll just throw this out too. Jordan and his team have been working to find somebody to come in and do a cooking class as well. Because one of the programs that we love to run is teach kids how to cook. And they've talked to community food council about working in our garden and that tied into that conversation as well. And so we're hoping that this year we will be able to get a cooking program up and running for those kids who are involved too. So we'll be not just utilizing a fridge, but actually utilizing the whole kitchen. Serve safe has always been something that we do. And so we'll tie all that in as well. Another question regarding fuel costs, vehicles. We, currently we have fifteen vehicles. Three of those are at end of life. And so we'll be working on surplusing those. All our staff are in, are driving vehicles at some point or another. Some typically on the adult side that work at the courthouse office, they're assigned vehicles. So they don't have to come to work and try and find one that's available. The rest are left at the juvenile services building, opportunity center. And juvenile officers are using those opportunity center staff, the reentry officers are using those, not just for transports, but they're actually, well, kind of transports, I guess. They're picking kids up, bringing them to the facility for programs, taking them home. And we would expect that that continues and grows too. A lot of the kids that we're talking to, families that we're talking to have transportation as one of their primary challenges. This year, you know, fuel cost is something that especially running an institution, because we were running propane, electrical, water. Utilities were, and all include fuel in that, were always a big consideration as we go through the budget process. This year, we decreased the general fund portion of that, I think, by a couple of thousand dollars. I want to say five, but I could be thinking of something else. And similar to other things, we try and spread those costs for fuel out among the different budget and project lines. So if it's a, a car that was purchased using JJCPA or Yobag funds. So juvenile programs, we'll try and budget that fuel or expend the, the fuel budget out of that line for that vehicle and those services. So that all tries, that gets spread as well.
I just asked that question about the fuel because it seemed like twenty thousand six hundred fifty bucks was quite a bit of fuel. You know, breaking it down onto what mileage that was, it was, it was quite a few miles. So I was just wanting some, some clarification as to, that, that just seemed like an awful lot of time and vehicles. And I didn't know how many transports we were doing back and forth to Eureka. But, you know, that's, it was like a trip to Eureka back and forth almost every work day of the year. So it just seemed like an awful lot in the fuel line and kind of along the same idea that Supervisor Starky was talking about, trying to pencil those pennies for the general fund is kind of what we're looking at, trying not to over budget. And so, thank you for explaining that for me.
Yeah, and our costs, again, group home foster placements, if it's out of county, we're using fuel to do those visits as well. So that's another thing that we're spending money on and we do spend quite a bit of time on the road.
How many current youth do you have out of county?
We're still visiting our NMDs as well, our non-minor dependents. I think we've got two that were going out of county every month. In addition to the kids, any kids that we have in detention?
You have to do the, if you, if they're in detention in Shasta County, you still have to follow those same once a month rules that you have to go visit them?
It's not, it's not required because they're in detention, but as a matter of practice, that's what we've been doing since we started housing out of county. So in a sense, we're treating them similar to foster placements. And so we're still doing those once a month visits, even with those kids in custody.
When I was a placement officer, I would just do the loop. So is that what you guys are kind of trying to do as well?
Yeah. So I think I hit most things in a little bit of a lightning round. So other questions that you have?
The only, the, I got one question for you, which is under your two four four budget, under special department expenses, Prop sixty-four. There was a hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase in that ask for this year. What's, what's it wrapped up in that?
So the Prop sixty-four will be tied to that grant, that specific grant.
Right.
We're going to be moving funds as our project manager has done different things. We have a youth advisory board. They're getting stipends. She's getting paid. We have CCRP, which is our local evaluator. They have a contract as well. And so different expenditures are going to flow through us out to those different parts and pieces for that grant.
Okay, appreciate it.
When are we going to get a presentation on that?
Hopefully soon. I've been working with my project manager and trying to nail down that preliminary report because there's been some hiccups in that.
All right. Supervisor had some questions and I have some.
Do you have additional? I'm just trying to understand the process that you go through to give us a draft budget in June. Now, when do your meetings start with our budget team?
Budget team meetings are starting in April, May.
And how many do you have before the draft budget is submitted?
Really depends on the year. Sometimes it's one and we pull it off. Sometimes there's multiple.
And how long do those meetings take?
Several hours and that's after we have our internal meetings. Because we have to create our budget and submit it before the budget team ever sees it. And so we're spending hours and hours to put together those annual budgets, right after mid-years, by the way. The, the three of us sitting here. So myself, Jordan has always been involved. He was administrator for the juvenile hall or manager. So juvenile hall, two four three budget, that was his thing. And so he's well familiar with that and has stayed in the mix of things. Christine has been doing finance for a long time.
And does the board's budget team, when they conduct these processes with you, leading up to June, are they asking you similar type questions?
Yes. Yeah, typically we're going line by line when we sit down and go through a meeting. And we've got follow-up homework that we have to come back with. Sometimes we're a little more timely about that than others. But yeah, there's always follow-up and things that need to be cleaned up.
Okay, thank you.
So we have just a couple more minutes on for you. How many people, adults are on probation on average this last year? But I mean, I, I believe that we should have some statistical information so we can kind of look at that. Just how many people are being served by this? On average?
So looking at adult numbers, in the last fiscal year, we had four hundred and thirteen individuals on supervision. Plus another forty-nine on pretrial supervision. Total was four hundred and sixty-two. On average, again, both probation and pretrial supervision, three hundred and sixty-nine any given month.
Okay. Do you track recidivism rates?
We are not. We're struggling with that. So
Yeah, it's hard.
We, this goes back several years, but our analyst actually was working with DOJ to try and pull down data. Because to get any good recidivism data, we need DOJ data. So he's worked with DOJ and IT and we hit some, some roadblocks. We're going to try and do internal, local with jail data and court data to at least have some kind of starting point. And keep trying to knock down the, the state number.
Because we definitely want to see some success rates, right? And I'm sure you have successful terminations. And, and then how many pre-sentence reports did you write this last year?
PSI is a hundred and eighty-four.
Oh, wow.
That doesn't include post-sentence reports, which we get on a regular basis out of Pelican Bay cases, supplemental reports and other filings.
Yeah, when I worked there, how many did I write to, to get caught up? Are we caught up still?
Not caught up still with only two officers. We're struggling.
No, totally understand. And then just juvenile probation's roughly how many are on juvenile probation, not actually in custody, but just on wardship or?
Currently, we've got eighteen. So three of those, eighteen. Three of those are non-minor dependents. So they've chosen to continue services after they reach the age of eighteen. They're not on supervision anymore, but we still have some case management responsibilities for them.
Do we get funding for that?
I believe we do draw down some juvenile funding. I don't remember which lines they are. Four, four E. It's four E funding.
All right, thank you.
And just for a moment, a clarification, because it just got passed over real quick. And that is the AB one oh nine. There is a committee that oversees and sets the, sets the actual spending to be adapted and that is held by the courts, yourself, sheriff's office, city police, plus several other organizations. PD's office or has, hasn't, has represented there. So it's overseeing and then that, that budget is set and then the monies go out.
Yeah, the, the plan actually does come to the board every year for approval.
Right.
So that's something on my to-do list in the next month, month and a half, is finalize that plan for this year. I don't foresee we'll see significant changes at all.
But they've never, yeah, they've never audited in, in all the time that it's existed, which is, it was pacification money anyway, so. Appreciate your, your opportunity.
I mean, that's rare though for the state, not to want to know exactly where every single dollar is going. So that's why I asked.
They were just giving it as a go-away.
Yeah, go-away for sure.
Thank you. You're, you, you are, you are released.
Chair Wilson, just, you need to take public comment?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Is there any public comment on the presentation given by probation department? You are correct. Seeing no public comment. Thank you. We have community development?
I do just want to say though, that I understand Supervisor Howard's questioning is that this is all gone over with the budget team prior to. However, you know, we need to know this information too. We're going to be the ones providing or making the approval of the budget. So I do appreciate everybody taking the time to make sure that we understand it. I understand that for some it might be a waste of time, but it is certainly important for us to be transparent, for me, for the public.
And again, as you stated last time, the process is transparent. So I wanted you to recall that statement that you made, that our current process before we had these hearings was a transparent process.
And as two o'clock, we are going to be moving forward with the community development department. And I recognize Heidi Constle, Director.
Good afternoon. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have regarding our general fund budgets.
Okay.
How would you prefer to do this, Heidi? Would you like to go department by department? Because I just want to point out that you operate one, two, three, four, five, six departments underneath your department. If not more, if we count the non-general fund of roads. So how would you like to do it?
I think we, we could begin with one oh one, one eight three, engineering, and then just go through them.
Perfect.
That's an easy one.
So I'll, if I could kick us off, Chair?
Go right ahead.
Because what my concern with engineering is it doesn't have any payroll or salaries. So can you explain that structure of the engineering department as to why there are no, how does that work?
In twenty eighteen, there was a reorganization and the engineering division, engineering and serving division staff were transferred to the road fund. And that has worked well for our department. So the payroll associated with those employees is in the one oh two, three one one. The process has been reviewed annually since that's happened by the state controllers' office as part of the annual road audit. So they're, they're housed within the other budget unit. This is just an operating budget for non-road fund related duties or duties that can't be reimbursed through the county service area number one or flood control.
Okay, so with that though, how, if the engineering department did perform those activities in other departments, where does that funding, where's the payroll for that? Is it all just under roads, no matter what, even if they did something for?
So what you're saying, okay, so for example, if the roads division staff perform services for the county service area, there's an inter-fund item, line item in the three oh seven, zero seven seven, which is the CSA budget and in the one oh two, three one one, which would be the road fund budget. So what we have, for example, in this off, in this budget is an inter-fund line item, which is what transfers, which I believe is for two hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is what is used to transfer funds to the road fund to make it whole for any non-road fund cost.
Okay, and so there's also no revenues in the engineering department. Is there any chance for us to have revenue sources in engineering?
The revenues that the engineering division receive or the engineering functions receive are deposited into the road fund. And they're used to help offset this two hundred and forty thousand. So if we receive ten thousand dollars in revenue for that month and the costs that are spent are twenty thousand, then we're only going to ask for ten thousand dollars to be transferred.
Okay. And then my last question that I have is, do you have any identified goals for the engineering department in this next fiscal year?
Yeah, to maintain our current staffing levels, which of course are over in the roads. To recruit for a new engineering technician. We've had a very longstanding employee who's going to be retiring at the end of the month. So we're hoping to refill his position. Other goals are just to, you know, ensure that we are, you know, issuing, reviewing and issuing permits that are relative to this particular fund in a timely manner. Such as grading permits, improvement plans, survey maps, et cetera.
Great, thank you. That's all the questions I have for engineering. Anyone else? What would you like to do next, Heidi?
We could just go through the line planning. One oh one, two five eight.
Okay. Anybody have questions or?
Yeah, I, I just had the one question about professional services. Seeing that it is a hundred and sixty-four thousand this year, when we were only forty-five thousand last year, I was just kind of wondering what the plan was.
Yeah, Supervisor Starky had the same question or similar question. Of that amount, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-five is allocated. Um, of that amount, 159,595 is allocated to the Camp Memorial Expansion Feasibility Study from the State Cultural Conservancy. And so we recently received an augmentation in funds from the state conservancy in, in June. Uh, so the majority of the funds are for that. We also have, um, $5,000 in that line item in the event that we need to hire a professional planning consultant to provide outside services to our department. So that's what it is. There is also a corresponding revenue line item of, to be reimbursed for that 159,000. Yeah. $595, that would be 90622. So it's essentially a wash.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I am curious, we have three brand-new planning commissioners and I noticed that there is a, uh, line item for just $4,000 for, uh, planning commission, travel and training. Is, is there any wiggle room that we could get that up and increased to? Because, because they're three brand-new planning commissioners.
Uh, well, that's certainly the discretion of the board if they choose to do so. Uh, this is the first time we've in probably, well, as long as I've been involved in, in budgets for the department, had any money for this. But we do have three really new planning commissioners who are interested in bettering their knowledge. And so it is important that we, we can invest in them if we can. Uh, they have been provided links to some free training, um, via the Institute of Local Government. Uh, and I know, I think several of them are going to have, well, I think all of them have taken us up on it or will be taking us up on it. I know at least one of the commissioners would like additional training. Uh, so we've explored a couple of options. Uh, one was kind of determined to be maybe not so great. And then the second is a planning commissioners academy and that's with the, um, California League of Cities. And Supervisor Starkey did some research on that as far as finding out what the fees would be for next fiscal year, um, to attend the three-day academy. So we have that information and price that out. You with lodging, kind of like a high to low, staying in a nice hotel. So it kind of went, uh, anywhere from, if we, they stayed in a different hotel to that hotel, uh, it would be between 2,900 and 3,400 dollars, uh, to attend. Uh, you know, it's likely this particular year, we may only have one commissioner who's interested in attending. Uh, and then the remaining funds would be to, for supplemental training. I know we've already spent some funds for, um, Brown Act training, uh, that the county council's office has assisted us with. Uh, there may be some others, I mean, as far as providing, um, law offices that provide webinar or web-based training. So, uh, it, it depends on whether or not you want to, the board wants to allocate for more than one commissioner to attend. And I have looked at the variety, I spent, uh, quite a bit of time this weekend looking at different options and there really aren't that many options for planning commissioner training that aren't just either what ILG is offered or what is being offered through the League of Cities, which I think looking at their, uh, agenda is, it's really good. I mean, I'd actually like my planning staff to be able to attend it as well. Be very valuable. Unfortunately, the training budget for planning isn't very much. Uh, but, uh, I think as most of you know, in the past, we've, our budgets have focused primarily on, uh, providing money for positions that had registration or required continuing education. Because planning doesn't have that, it, we typically haven't had very much allocated to it.
As somebody that's served on the planning commission for eight years, it was always a process to gain as much knowledge as we could from staff. There's only so much room we have under our county policies and more importantly, under statute, to have flexibility as planning commissioners. So you're, you get caught up to speed pretty quick within a year. And what you don't know, staff is there to help coach you through a process, through discussion that is transparent in front of the folks that are proposing, proposing an application to be approved by the commission and staff input. So not too dissimilar from the processes that we go by. We don't have to know everything. To me, it's not necessarily a priority, especially for those commissioners that are serving a long time.
And how many, um, employees are on the payroll in planning? Do we have two planners and a part-time person?
What we have are, um, yeah, we have two planners and we have, um, a secretary who is assigned 50% to the planning division and 50% to our code enforcement division.
And then, um, general workload for the planners? How, how many cases are they taking in every, I mean, will you walk me through that little bit of process?
It, it's very, um, it varies significantly. Sometimes you really, you, we give out lots of applications, you know, run people through the process. Sometimes we see them return, sometimes we don't. Sometimes what they come back with isn't really necessarily what we wanted, uh, or, you know, adequately, um, enough to be able to process the application. Uh, so any given month could be really different. And then once we receive a project, depending on whether or not it's exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, we have a whole second process that goes on with having to do, um, AB tribal consultation and then, uh, preparation of the initial study to the state clearinghouse, the 30-day comment period for that. And then working with a really, um, difficult, uh, schedule of the triplicate with their publication deadlines and then trying, it, it's really prolonged the length of being able to get development applications to our commission by doing, with all these, uh, deadlines that we have, kind of doing this in a roundabout way. So I, I don't know if that's answered your question. All I know is you could have, um, I mean, we could receive three applications for overhead accessory buildings, super easy, boundary adjustment, super easy. We could, and the same thing, get a subdivision that has a lot of resource issues, a coastal development permit that might have a rare plant. Uh, it, it just really varies and that's just, you know, one thing that planners are doing. I mean, they're constantly receiving phone calls from members of the public, from realtors, et cetera, developers, trying to gather information or determine whether or not, you know, their property is developable or, you know, what they can and can't do with it.
So they don't carry it like a caseload, like code enforcement carries a caseload, so they don't.
No.
But so what metrics are you, you gency? And I, that's one of my questions.
And that's, I've, I've struggled with that. I mean, to me, the metric, or what I look at is if people are not able to respond to people in a timely manner and we're not able to meet the deadlines that we have to process applications, we need more staff.
Right.
And, and I think we, we realized, um, that, uh, having one planner was not viable. When our one planner, we had one planner from when, uh, Assistant CAO Hooper left our office until, um, then we had, uh, after he left, then we had Taylor Carsley. And then when Taylor left, it was, we had no one. And essentially I had to go back and do it and it was like, very, it's, I can understand maybe why Taylor left, even though I know, I, I know, I know really why he left, but that would certainly have been another good reason. But I, again, I've been very support, thank you, thankful to the board because you did, uh, um, authorize the creation of that second position using the measure of our funds and very, very thankful.
And so that has been helpful.
Oh, absolutely.
Has, are we pushed to the limit again, or are we feeling?
I think we're okay. I think right now what we have are two newer planners. They're doing great, uh, and the longer they're here, the more they're, the better, better, not better, but you know, the, the more experience we're going to have, which will allow them to get through things quicker because the institutional knowledge that you have in planning is, it's enormous in being able to move through your work.
Right.
So we're just growing on that.
Um, and then this is kind of an odd question because sometimes we have to track our service delivery, right? Um, client satisfaction is how many complaints we don't get, right? So, um, do you feel that overall the client satisfac- satisf- satisfaction with the planning, since we've increased it to two, have we, you know, helped people proceed faster? That's a tough one, huh?
It is a tough one. I mean, I, I believe that we, I, we have to have been able to, to make things go smoother. You know, whether or not they're any happier with the information they receive.
Right.
Probably not, uh, but, but I mean, it, they may receive it quicker. Sometimes it's just, this, this particular division is tasked with sometimes giving sort of difficult information to the public.
So planning is where people come in to do, if they want an ADU, right? They start with planning. Do we have any, uh, do you have any goals for this next year, this fiscal year? I know you and I've talked about perhaps set plans for ADUs. Do we have any of those that you may need more on your budget in order to get those things available?
Actually, thank you for bringing that up. That would be part of our building inspection budget and we have an employee who, um, is off for a couple of weeks and he'll be returning for some light duty and he's going to be putting together plans for our building inspection. So we should have, uh, we're going to work with county council's office to make sure that we're, you know, legally, um, on the up and up. We know other jurisdictions do it, so I think we're fine. But we're looking at sort of having a, um, a smaller unit, a mid-size unit, and then like the full-size unit that we would have three sets of pre-planned check plans available to the public.
And then in your revenues, you've got this Title III, um, for the planning. It's 20,000 consistently. What's, what is that related to?
Okay, I have to refer to my notes here. Um, public will all, 106, 395, Title III funds are available to the county for county planning. So we have a fund that has money in this that it's sort of tied in with the timber receipts and all of that. Uh, so county planning in this context is specifically for the analysis of impacts in and around the federal lands of the county. A significant amount of staff time is dedicated to this effort as well as other planning efforts that correlate with wildfire protection, resource protection that affect the forest. And so by having this allocation, we had to submit an application in order to receive these funds, which was posted in the newspaper and then ultimately approved by your board. Uh, for a few years, we had a $15,000 allocation and then it was increased to 20,000 in, I believe, uh, fiscal year 22, 23, uh, in order to offset a rising staff cost and the fact that we then had two planners.
Alright, and is there any software or anything like that that your department in planning, um, is looking at that would help streamline some of the services?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. In this last, um, for fiscal year 23 and now for 24, 25, uh, funds have been allocated for, it's a, a di- natural diversity database from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife that allows us to, uh, look at an area on a map and then identify what type of, um, you know, rare or threatened endangered species may in that, be in that area. So it's kind of an absence, presence kind of thing that helps us in our review of development applications. So that, that's a new thing for us, which we, we do appreciate having that available.
Those are all my questions for planning.
Any other questions?
I just had a clarification, uh, question talking about planners and the training aspect. I was a city planning commissioner before being on council, so did I misunderstand you Supervisor Howard? You're not in favor of the training? Is that?
That's correct.
That is correct?
Yep.
Okay, cause I, I know as a city planning commissioner, I was lost when I first got there. So, um, I was thinking that the training would be valuable, valuable, and especially since, uh, Director Constle said that planners would be, uh, it would be valuable for planners too. I just kind of wondered why, why the ask for that training budget line wasn't made or wasn't made?
In the planners' training?
Yes.
Just because we haven't traditionally asked for it. Uh, and there is a lot of online training available, uh, that is food for thought. But, I mean, if we're looking at places to save money, which oftentimes we are when we're reviewing general fund budgets, uh, that would certainly be one of the spots. I mean, the planners are pretty savvy at finding the training. I mean, obviously much more savvier than a commissioner maybe. And we're pretty much in tune with what resources are available to us. And we have, you know, networks of people that we can also interact with.
Supervisor Short, I guess I would suggest, and, and I'm not trying to break tradition, what I'm trying to do is save costs in a budgetary process. And from my experience, having gone through this for an eight-year period, when I didn't know something or I needed to catch up to speed, we had staff available to help coach that process. It obviously takes staff time, but it wasn't a cost that I had to go out and learn somewhere else. The resources ready, available to us.
Thank you.
Mike, my little bit of concern is that in the past too, you had other commissioners that could, you know, you know, have that experience that could walk you through. And with having three brand-new commissioners, um, I just wanted to make sure that we provided them the best foundation possible, but.
Let's move on to community development. Does anybody have any questions for your community development budget?
I do. So CDD, so this, this is where I get kind of confused here. So CDD's budget in this payroll, who, who's, how many people are included in that payroll?
Okay, I can do that. Yeah, you're, the questions that you have, um, one, two, and three.
Yeah.
I'm, I'd like to answer those out of order.
Sure.
Because I think that would be helpful.
You can do whatever you want.
Within, uh, the, the CDD admin, it's myself and a, an account clerk. Actually, it will be an administrative assistant. Uh, in last year's budget, um, your board approved, um, a reclassification of our account clerk position to an administrative assistant. Uh, the account clerk position, uh, that position was not vacated until May of this year. So we've been recruiting since, but we have not been able to fill it. Uh, so we have a, I don't want to say, she's not a retired annuity, but we have a part-time temporary employee who's helping us as an account clerk until we have this position refilled. Well, actually until about the first week in September and then I'll be doing it. So hopefully we get it refilled, um, soon. But the administrative assistant, that the, it will be paid for 50% using the CDD admin allocation, 25% with environmental health and then, no, excuse me, sorry, 75% with the CDD admin allocation and then 25% with environmental health. Uh, as opposed to the current or what the account clerk, which is 100% following the CDD admin allocation, which I can explain. And essentially what that's doing is it's taking the cost of all the payroll, um, and benefits, services and supplies, uh, cost plan, all of those costs associated with running administratively the, the division and then equally, or excuse me, not equally, um, allocating it amongst the other five divisions based on payroll. So obviously the division that has the largest payroll pays the largest contribution. So what you'll see in this particular budget are for intra-fund line items, uh, for code enforcement, planning, building inspection and environmental health. And then one inter-fund line item that's under revenues, that's the road fund coming into, to it. So the net cost for this division is zero because it's balanced out with the contributions from the other divisions.
That was clear. Thank you. So under services and supplies for rental equipment, I guess I was just curious for what that rental equipment is?
Yeah, that's the, uh, photocopier for our Flynn office. And so all the divisions use that and then we charge them for copies. Um, the invoices and processing of all of that, um, go through our information technology department.
Oh, great, okay. So that is like for the big blueprints and that sort of thing?
This is actually just for a traditional photocopier. It's like to Canon, who the bills are to. We have two bills each month. I think one's just based on having the equipment and others for the number of copies that run through it.
Um, under revenues for inner fund roads, what, what is, no, hold on, sorry, other charges, contribution to outside agency under 305, 30, what, what is that?
Uh, that would be if the department wanted to, uh, participate in the E3 summer youth program.
Okay.
Uh, we did that in fiscal years 21, 22, and 20, 21, 22, and 22, 23. And we had intended to do it this year, but with losing our account clerk who had provided the supervision for that, we weren't able to participate this year, but we're hoping we'll be, um, fully staffed by the May of 2025, which is when, uh, they reach out to us participating in the program.
Okay. So when we have the revenues that come in, that the 290,000, um, from the intra-fund from roads, because it's coming from a non-general fund, what reporting requirements are mandated on the state level? Like what my question is, is that when that money's transferred into a, a general fund department, do you have the same reporting requirements to the state? Or is that just enough for them to say, we've transferred this over for this purpose?
I believe all the monitoring or auditing, it, it would occur on the road fund side. So in the 102, 311 budget, it would be like any other transfer, any other thing that they would pay for as far as. it would be like any other transfer, any other thing that they would pay for as far as being audited. That would be my understanding. Um, auditor Shad wanted to add to that.
No, okay. Um, and then do you have any major challenges or risks that are facing, uh, this department's budget in the next few years?
Uh, not particularly. I think my, my largest concern is, uh, being able to refill that position because, you know, being able to pay your bills and do all those things, which is what this one position does for all of our general fund divisions. It's, it's pretty vital. And, and while I, I've now been trained to do it, I, I don't have time to do that in my own job. I mean, I do, but it's extra time. I mean, I.
So the administrative assistant, is that what you're, you're talking about, getting that administrative assistant up and going?
Yeah, they would perform all of the duties that our account clerk has done traditionally. And then we've also, um, identified, uh, a series of other kind of higher-level type, uh, duties that we would like to add in to it, which is gonna be a great thing. We find the.
So I would imagine that's your goal for this next year for this?
It's my goal for the next three weeks.
And one of, one of the things that we, that we've had recent discussions on is the fact that with the new system, um, that's going in, that it allows the individual departments to do far more of the actual billing and, and processing of those bills before it, it impacts the auditor's office individually. And so as that comes to bear, uh, we may have to look at reexamining some of the department auditing individually, uh, how much that is being done in-house and how much is, is being impacted back to that, at the auditor's offices. As this new system rolls out, uh, that's one of the questions that we have to ask and look at.
That's all I had.
Got it for you?
Yep.
Anybody else on this? Let's go to building inspection, 261. The only thing I had for your building inspection 261 was the fact that you have under 20171 vehicle maintenance, it seems a bit low, $300.
Yeah, that, that would be, uh, fees that we would pay to an outside vendor if we were to go to someone else.
Vehicle maintenance is what it says.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, as opposed to, we also have another line item. It's a roads inter-fund line item. So if we need, uh, repair, we can also have our shop at roads do the work for us. We also have two fairly new vehicles. So at this point, we're, it's mostly, um, you know, changing oil. I know, exactly. Uh, nothing major. I mean, in past years, you know, we've had to get new tires and those types of things. But those are things that we also talk about in our budget meetings.
Right.
Whether or not we're at that spot. It does seem low though.
Well, yeah, just looking at your previous years, 1,000, 1,400, 2,000.
Yeah.
And then 300 for this year.
Yeah, we, last year I believe we had, I'm sure that you prefer, we had a vehicle removed that are replaced that had a lot of issues.
If you're, if you're comfortable with that number, I'm comfortable with that number.
I'm comfortable with it. We'll live with it. We'll see how it goes. Fingers crossed.
Um, you, you talk online to 2234 about, uh, data processing software. Is that a new software?
Uh, that was software that was purchased with a REIT planning grant and yes, it, uh, it is newer and it allows us to receive and issue building permits online. Uh, we're still working our way through that. Uh, the first, the setup and the first year of the fees were all paid with grant funds. Uh, what you see in this year's budget is gonna be the first year of, you know, us having to use non-grant funds for it. Uh, and the annual renewal is in March. So it's March to March.
And then the, um, I kinda asked the additional manpower to implement that up because you have this in, in the intra-fund 3,000 from IT. Is that to implement this particular new software or is that for something different?
Uh, this is to scan building permits. As part of that same REIT planning grant, we had all of our building permits scanned and we want to keep up with that. So this is what the 3,000 is to have IT staff. Uh, also there was, uh, $10,000 in the planning division budget that is also for us to begin scanning all of our planning files, which is gonna be really huge.
Don't tell me the location, but they're stored now in like boxes?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, um, actually metal, metal file cabinets.
Okay. And then what is a strong motion fee?
Okay, um, the California Strong Motion Instrumentation Seismic Hazard Mapping Fee is a fee that cities and counties assess for all building permits. The fee is based on the percentage of the proposed building's construction value or valuation. The fee varies by category and is a minimum of 50 cents. Uh, our department collects this fee and quarterly sends 95% of the fees to the Department of Conversa- Conversation.
Conversation.
Conservation, who uses the funds for seismic mapping. Uh, the reason why it may be greater than this year than last year is because we had at least one or two particular permits that had a high valuation. And so we received the money as a revenue, but the amount that we had to pass it through to the state wasn't, we didn't have enough in it. So I had to come to the board mid-year and have the revenues increased and those line items in order to send the pass-through money back to the state. And so this is kind of our preemptive move to make sure we have enough money. If we don't get the money as revenue, we're not sending it to the state. So it's not be a, a general fund liability. But that's in a nutshell what it's about.
Um, so I have under revenue that, I mean, construction permits, that's a real steady, um, revenue source. And you've recommended on the revenue 329,000, although this year to date is 374. I guess I was just hoping that you could kinda walk me through, um, or us through the, some of the, do we have? Are we anticipating big developments? What, what kind of things could we do to help increase that revenue, I guess? I asked two different questions.
Yeah, yeah. I, I can say each year when we have our, our pre-budget meeting or budget meeting, uh, internally, we discuss, you know, have, do you know of anything that's coming through? If we know of a large project that's coming through, we would certainly include that. If not, what we do is really, we rely upon our actials. And then also just internally, like what, you know, our, you know, conversations that our inspectors are having with contractors, conversations we're having at the pub, at the counter with the public, kind of getting a feel, do we think there's gonna be anything coming in? Does it seem like, you know, is this a recession? You know, th- those types of things. We've had those. Uh, and that, that's kind of, it's like a crystal ball. I mean, we, we come up with a number and then whenever we have, uh, the second budget meeting, uh, prior to the option of the final, at that point, we usually have our actials. And at that point, we reevaluate it. Should it be higher? Or if so, let's, let's increase it. And, uh, that's more often than not, that's what we do.
Do you typically, um, for revenues, um, budget lower than what you anticipate just in case?
Not intentionally.
Yeah.
Not intentionally. Um, I, I, I can see the point of doing that, but no, not in this case. I think we really do try to have it be as, as close to what we think we may get. But again, it's a crystal ball. It's how many people come in with, how, you know, the value of the project. It varies.
I think there are ways. I, there would, nothing would make me more happy to see those revenue line items projected quite a bit further. But that takes investment from the county. More importantly, it takes investment of economic development dollars to really start identifying parcels out there and then seeking development for those parcels. So there's a lot of legwork that we'll need to go into. Those type of opportunities that will help lay out a red carpet per se when we have a fish on the line.
Do you think that comes from, just for my own clarification, do you think that comes from this building inspection or from Heidi's, uh, division in and of itself? Or do you think that is through an economic development position?
Heidi's, Heidi's current department budget doesn't allow for the capacity to do the extra legwork. It would have to come from a different source.
What I would say is wherever this position or whatever, wherever it ends up being, that, you know, whenever they have ideas for projects, they would come to us and we would go through, maybe look at, you know, what, what lands are available and trying to help them build projects.
And that's, that's an approach that, it's one step at a time. And what I had to advocate for, as long as we're trying to tiptoe ourselves in the economic development world, is to get ahead of that. And that's, that's what a lot of communities do that are on the cutting-edge economic development. They're laying out the groundwork. So when a developer comes to the area and they actually have a fish on the line, they have all that stuff worked out prior to that developer getting it. And so instead of that developer approaching us, what's available out there, we already know what that is.
But like, and so you've answered it, but to my question, or my, it, what you're saying is, is that that would be through CDD in general to have those identified or no? That's not what you're saying?
CDD would need to work in cooperation with whoever we have brought on to fill that capacity.
I think we have a lot of the data, the land use data that they would need.
Okay.
Uh, but we, we don't in-house have the expertise to know how you make all that happen. We're not developers.
Okay.
We're on the other side.
That's interesting. Thank you. Um, how many building inspections were requested by the public last fiscal year?
1,590.
Whoa, and that's with two building inspectors?
Yep.
Holy moly, okay. Um, and then the average timeframe from request to completion, because I, I would imagine that contractors really need to keep things moving along. So what, what is that kind of average time?
Now, you, are you talking about the average time for an inspection?
No, like for when they say, okay, come inspect my foundation.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Uh, generally, if you call in the morning, you may get an afternoon inspection. Uh, I mean, we've even, I mean, we can't make any promises because we don't know where people are. I mean, you could have an inspection in Klamath or Big Flat or Low Divide Road. So we have to kind of logistically figure out where we are, but, uh, you know, if it, if it's say, an electrical for like a green tag and it's on Friday and the power company can be at someone's house at four o'clock, we're gonna be there because that's when we need to be there. Um, but typically, we, we're very, um, I think we try our best to work with people's.
Oh, okay. So they don't put on like a formal thing? It's not like this process where they submit something and then you review it and then?
Well, I think, are you just trying, I mean, this would be if someone wanted, I mean, like, hey, I need a roof nail inspection this afternoon. We're gonna put it, go and look at our board. We're gonna see where our inspectors are and we're gonna put their name down and someone's gonna show up between one and three or one and four or whatever. So if that's what you mean.
Yep, no, exactly what I mean, yeah.
I can watch for that. They're extremely responsive. Typically, they'll say, hey, give me 24 hours, but if it's raining this afternoon and I pulled a permit this morning, they'll come before this.
That's awesome.
I mean, they are on it.
Yeah.
They're always willing to help.
Yeah, that's, that's one thing that we have to compliment on is the building department is really Johnny on the spot when it comes to going out there and doing certifications as part of that process. Um, even when you were short-staffed, they really didn't take more than 24 hours to get out there. I, I never saw them go past two days to get the sign off done. So big compliments.
Good to hear. Thank you. We'll accept those.
And then any specific goals that you have for building inspection this next year? Any new software that you need? I mean, aside from what you've?
I think we just, our main thing is to keep the staffing level that we have. Uh, and then, yeah, we, we do want to increase the use of our online permitting program if we can. Uh, we're also looking at doing, uh, plan checks on our computers. Our, um, our primary plan, plan reviewer got a nice monitor for him and so that, that'll be something that's going to be coming up. And then bringing those ADU plans online. Encouraging more people to develop ADUs.
Have we looked at any kind of tax credits or anything like that, that it would help, um, encourage people to want to build ADUs? Is that something that your department would look into or?
I.
Why are you guys laughing?
Oh, I'm, I, driving through my district, there's no encouragement needed.
Oh, is there a lot of ADUs going up?
I don't think there's any permits, but I.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I'm unsure about that. I, I know I have seen with, you know, some, you know, things about incentives, but it, it's more through a state program. It's not something that would be, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah. So we, we have not looked into it.
All right. I appreciate it.
Any other questions for this budget line?
Sorry, I just had one, uh, the part-time temporary line. I know it's not a big budget item and I see that we had it there last year for $12,000, but I just wondered what you're using the.
Uh, we, we have a, a retired annuitant who, uh, was formerly the, uh, account clerk for the building inspection division. And she is available to help us when we need extra help.
Good deal.
And that's why we have those funds allocated. So we're only gonna use what we need and it'll probably be less than what's listed. Uh, but it's nice to have that safety net because if you have, uh, someone on vacation, what have you, she's available to come in and bail us out.
Oh, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's move on to 410, environmental health.
So I guess, if I could, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Um, can you just give a brief overview of the job functions of environmental health? Because I think there's just, it feels like there is like several different, I'm sorry Supervisor Howard, did you have something?
I said I can.
Oh, um, I love that. Um, but so environmental health, they do a variety of things. They're not just inspecting restaurants. They're, they're doing, what else?
Okay, they inspect restaurants, bars, retail food establishments, public drinking water supply systems, swimming pools, tattoo parlors. Um, they assist in the investigations of sewage disposal systems and land use projects. Uh, they permit and inspect well installations. They provide oversight to solid waste functions, including inspections of the transfer stations and closed landfills. They act as the certified unified program agency for the county, which includes permitting and monitoring for all facilities that have hazardous materials. Uh, they conduct installation and manumand inspections for underground storage tanks. Uh, they do the tobacco retail license. That's a newer one that they do. They do, uh, shellfish. Uh, if there's toxins, uh, they do, gosh, they just, uh, bedbugs in hotels, uh, bat bites, rabies, they do it all.
Is it, is it all complaint-driven or are there certain things that they have to go and like once a year, who, who are they reporting to?
Okay, well, for example, with food facilities as part of an annual permit, there's generally a one-year inspection, a one, an annual inspection. If there are complaints, we're gonna be out there more frequently until those are resolved. Uh, with, as the COOPA for hazardous materials, it depends on what type of hazardous materials you have. You may have inspections every three years. You may have them more frequently if you have underground storage tanks, et cetera. See here, I mean, we do, I believe, quarterly inspections on our solid waste. Did I answer it? What was it?
You know, I, I, if it was complaint-driven or not.
Oh, yeah. And then complaint, complaints are always something that we respond to as quickly as possible. That else, that also brings up another one, spill reports, hazardous, uh, when hazardous materials like boats losing fuel, um, fuel on roads, we get called out on all of those as well. And we, um, in, in, oh, I know the other part you said is who do we report to? For example, the COOPA, all of our reporting at the end of the day is reported to Cal EPA for, um, the transfer station and all of anything related to solid waste. It's reported to Cal Recycle. They both entities evaluate us every three years, review all of our records.
And with, um, I believe SB 1383, that we've, we've perhaps seen a little bit of, uh, pullback from that and the requirements. Is that true?
Yeah, I believe that we, with the rural exemption, but there, we are still working, I believe, and I could be wrong, on the tier one and tier two uh, food producers, so the grocery stores and the larger, uh, school district, I believe, we're supposed to be monitoring to make sure that any organic waste is being funneled to the proper location. So.
Yeah.
Board ordinance that.
One of the.
We're supposed to follow.
Yeah, I wanted to just check in. You mentioned the tobacco ordinance that we, we put into place. How much has that increased the workload for, uh, your staff on that?
Not really much at all. It, it can be done in tandem with other inspections. There might be one or two unique businesses that we may not have had under our program before, but for the most part, they're places we're going to be going for, they may have a grocery permit, say like a, like a fuel mart or something like that. We already have a permit, so it's just the same time.
Okay, all right.
At this point, we haven't considered adding a fee for that.
I just wanted to make sure, cause I mean, that was a big concern we had was the amount of work that we were going to then be requiring of environmental health. So I just wanted to double-check on that. Um, is there any shifts in funding priorities with environmental health that we need to be made aware of?
As far as I know, no, not at this point. Um, our major funding outside of revenues and somebody that we receive from Cal Recycle, uh, would be the realignment funds that are transferred to us quarterly from, uh, Department of Health and Human Services. from Department of Health and Human Services. We have tried to work with them to get the net cost of the environmental health division to be zero dollars. And I don't know, it looks like right now we're sitting with an, I think, according to the doc figure that you provided, we have a net cost now. So when everything shakes down, I'll need to be speaking with the department, the director for the Department of Health and Human Services to find out whether or not there are additional funds to help offset this to get us down to a zero net cost.
Yeah, you guys are very close.
And then we only transfer what we need. For example, the fourth quarter of this, of 2324, we didn't, we looked at our budget and we realized we didn't need the full amount of the quarterly payment. So we never asked for more than what we can use. So this would be if we spent every cent we have or allocated in the budget, which we rarely do.
And you listed off a lot of duties that they do. And this is, this is something that is able to be done with the two full-time employees?
Yes, I asked them about that and they felt that they're adequately staffed.
Okay.
And if we get the administrative assistant position filled, if they have any more administrative, higher-level administrative things that they need, we can have that person assist them.
Okay, perfect. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
Heidi, I just had the one question about your part-time temporary help there. Or I'm, I'm sorry, not part-time temporary professional services. I see 2122, we, that line was $825. The next year it went up to 2,000, but last year and this year it's up around 12,000 and 14,000. What are we, what are we using those funds?
This is, this funding relates to the pesticide storage area. So the Superfund site on Washington Boulevard. For many, many years, once a property was cleaned by the US EPA Department of Toxic Substances Control, we monitored it. Finally, we received positive results that the monitoring, that it has successfully met the threshold that allows us to discontinue monitoring it. But the next step in doing that is having a well destruction work plan approved by the Department of Toxic Substances Control. We had a plan prepared. It was submitted to DTSC in February of last year, I believe it was February. It has not been approved to date, not because there's anything wrong with it, just because that's their priority. But once that plan is approved, we're going to use those funds to destroy the well, the monitoring wells. And then once the monitoring wells are clean, then we can look toward removing the land use covenant that kind of plagues that property.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's go to 416, public nuisance, my favorite.
So you currently have two full-time employees there. I came to a Measure R meeting not too long ago and they had indicated that they were going to be asking for a third code enforcement office officer, but I don't notice that included in the payroll here. Something's shifted.
No, it hasn't been included in the payroll because it hasn't been brought to the board.
Okay.
CAO Lopez can explain what the process is. We submitted a, a report recently for that and it's my understanding it's going to be included in the final budget?
Yes, that's correct. It's already gone through the Measure R committee. Like you stated, Professor Starkey, and it's been to the board as well. And it was approved at both of those levels. And so Heidi has recently submitted a request, so it'll be part of that adopted budget.
Okay. And then what, what would, I mean, you can, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. But what would be the, the purpose of that third code enforcement officer? If you want to just briefly tell us about that now?
Sure, the position would be assigned to help abate encampment areas. As we're getting closer to the point in which our emergency shelter and microvillage are going to be in use, the next step is to abate those areas and then to keep them clean. And by having this one position dedicated to everything related to homelessness, not necessarily just at the locations that we've identified through this project, but elsewhere, it frees up the other two code enforcement officers to work on receiverships, abatement warrants, grants and administrative citations that are going to help improve our neighborhoods and our tourist corridors. This position though, $40,000 of the third position would be paid for by the Department of Health and Human Services. We have a commitment from Director Brown on that. And then the remaining funds would be with the Measure R. We estimated that the additional position would be around $87,000.
Great. I look forward to seeing that.
Can we stick on that subject just for a second?
Yeah, sure.
Since I'm just hearing about this for the first time and I know we're going to hear about it later, it sounds like. But the sustainability piece out of DHSS budget, is it one year, two years?
At this point, we just have one year.
Just one year? So this could be a position that could potentially erode in a future budget?
It could.
Potentially erode, go away.
It could potentially. Yes.
There is some succession planning, though.
Yeah, I didn't know. Thank you for bringing up. There is some succession planning that might make that.
The board's often criticized about salary development out of Measure R fund. So I know we need to be cognizant of it as a board when we're allocating the revenues from that fund to salary. But more importantly, if the dollars would be allocated towards some cleanups, something visual and impactful on the ground, I could see that being more, more acceptable for the use of those dollars than actually having a permanent salary on staff. Just, I don't, it's nuances in developing a budget, which are difficult. But you having very tenured aspect of doing this annually, we rely on you to develop that budget. But these are just concerns that I would express before this actually comes to the full board meeting and vetted with the public.
I think one of, I think, and it's something that can be raised because it was brought up at the Measure R meeting, which was, is a public meeting, is that there is sort of a succession planning in place. So there may be, by having this structure, we may not end up having to lay anyone off because someone may?
Might retire.
Understood.
So code enforcement, and I don't know about the gentleman, but for code enforcement, that's, that's the most that I feel like I'm involved with the community a lot of the time. So how many active cases are there currently or on average in this past fiscal year?
Okay, according to Dominic, on average, in, in fiscal year 2324, we had 335 cases opened during that last fiscal year. Seventy-nine cases from the past fiscal year remain open. Oh, and they have a total of 152 open cases. And then the 79 cases that remain open are ongoing or need attention to resolve.
Okay, and of those, how often are cases being taken to hearing? I know I sat in on a hearing. I felt the process was just invaluable. But how often are these cases actually going to that degree? Or are they being resolved before they get to a hearing?
According to Dominic, last fiscal year, we took 13 properties to the public nuisance hearing, to a hearing. I don't know how many individual hearings that were, how many were considered each. But we did have 100% success in our favor. This also didn't include the eight cases taken to a receivership through the courts, which were also all ruled in the county's favor.
That's a relatively new, the receiverships, is that a relatively newer process that we've been doing?
Yes, absolutely.
Has that been found to be successful?
Absolutely. It's a huge partnership that we have with County Council's Office. They've been amazing and helping with it and it's, can't say enough good things about it.
That's, that was my other question, is that how often are you guys interacting with other departments? Because I know code enforcement even sometimes interacts with the recorder's office when they're having to share data and stuff. So is that something?
Definitely, yeah, they're all over the place. Sheriff's Office, providing assistance both directions. We have Child Protective Services, Adult Protective Services, where we provide assistance with substandard housing. The County Conservator's Office with nuisance properties, where they have clients. Animal Control, and then they also assist us on nuisance issues. The Parks Department, we assist with the enforcement in campground rules if they need it or on other county-owned property. They've also helped us with cleanups whenever they've had staff. Lately, we've been, we've relied more on our on-call contractors' help with abatements. And then clearly, within the department, they help with all of the different codes within the community development in enforcing those if it gets to that point.
Awesome. Thank you so much for your work, Heidi. We really do appreciate you and all your,
Thank you.
all your leadership that you provide.
Any other questions?
By the board? Yeah, just talking about that receivership situation. I had that question, line 91121, the lien repayment. Is that, is that what that is about? Is we get that 60 grand? Is that a successful?
I'm glad, thank you for bringing that up. That was actually, I had submitted paperwork to the Otter's Office and I'd actually placed it in the wrong line item and I worked with Auditor Shad last week. That funding for the 60,000 is actually supposed to go into 91076, which is the inter-fund lien repayment trust. What we wanted to do is take $60,000 from what, the lien repayment trust, which we call our revolving fund. We want to take 60,000 from it and place it into the 101416 budget so we can use that for professional services to do cleanup. Typically, what the 60,000, the place where it was before would be if we were anticipating getting money, but we don't place it into this budget. We would place it into that, the lien repayment trust. Any type of recovery that we receive from abatements, you know, tax sales, so on, that goes into that fund. And then we, it's our bank account and then we transfer it over with the board's approval. So that has been corrected. It'll be presented to you with the final budget in September.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Heidi.
We appreciate your time.
All right, thank you.
Any public comment?
Oh.
Please come forward, please come forward up to the microphone.
I just had one, Heidi, and that was?
Scott, can you, can you tell us who you are first? Public meeting.
Well, I'm PJ and I have a question about why engineering was moved to roads. And I couldn't hear everything you said. Was that a state-mandated move?
No, it was not. It was a reorganization that was recommended at the staff level, for simplicity, because the majority of the duties that are performed by the engineering division staff related to county roads, or it should. And when it doesn't, our, we have to make the road fund whole, which is finding these other sources like our general fund. There's no case that the road fund can't be made whole. They can only bill time to road fund-related uses.
Okay, thank you. That was the only question.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a short break, five minutes, and then we'll begin with the clerk's office. Thank you. 305, who will reconvene and welcome the county clerk's court house.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
I have questions. So you have two different, you have three different departments, four different departments within your department, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so elections is one of them. How many employees are in the elections part of your department?
Myself and one elections clerk.
Okay. And then the part-time temporary employees that you have for your, under your payroll, are those only during election season? Or do you hire them for outside election season as well?
Mainly only during election season. If we have a project or anything we're working on, we will have someone in. And all of those also come out of a trust fund. So they're all paid out of a trust fund.
Can you explain what a trust fund is?
I have several trust funds set up. Most of them are through county clerk or recorder, but they can be used for specific things. And those projects, in-house projects is one of those.
Okay.
And extra help.
So the general election you have here, there's $145,000. And I'm sure that's a very typical, what can a cost come into running election? I mean, the?
So that does not include staff time or salaries or operating costs like phones, power, all that, none of that. But it does include indirect costs such as the printing of the ballots, printing the sample ballots, which is, you'd never know, are you going to have one ballot type, two ballot types, three ballot types? Are you going to have a one-page ballot, a two-page ballot? All of that, this election, there's going to be a lot of printing costs due to we have several state initiatives. several state initiatives on the ballot, two, um, local bond measures. So all of those printing costs go into that. We have to print, um, envelopes, outgoing and return envelopes, all the postage for all the ballots being mailed out and returned, um, legal notices, publications, uh, election programming and setup in the actual election management system. We have to do poll worker stipends, um, poll working supplies, RAVBM setup and programming, which is remote accessible vote by mail, which we're required to have. And then also just required signage and postings and for polling places also.
So, so with that, I, I noticed that there is under revenue twenty-five thousand dollars, but do we get any reimbursement from the state related to the state initiatives and that sort of thing?
No, we do not.
All right. But we have to follow, okay.
Yes.
That's what I was just kinda curious, so. And then, um, you have postage and I think you just answered it, um, that you have a line item for postage, but that's all postage separate from the mailers that go out for the ballots and, and for the voting, right?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
We have to send out notification cards and eighty-two cards anytime anyone re-register. So that's that postage for those things.
Okay. All right. And then, but as far as revenue from, does the revenue from, like when we ran for office, does that, is that anywhere in for elections or where does that revenue go?
That goes into the clerk's trust.
Okay. Um, okay. And then, so my only other question with regard to the elections part is that, um, do you have any anticipated budget needs in the next three to five years that might change? Is there something we should be looking at on the horizon?
No, other than, what did I put here? Um, you know, there's a couple of things. I see the, um, vote centers. I don't know if you've heard much about vote centers throughout the state. A lot of counties are going to vote centers. At this point, it's, you don't have to. It's up to each county to make their decision what they wanna do and we, of course, to this point have due polling places. I kinda feel like at some point it's gonna go the direction of be required, um, and that would be...
A change.
A change for us here.
What, what, what do you mean a vote center? Like?
Vote centers, um, so instead of having nineteen polling locations, you would have, um, less locations but open more days before the election.
Okay.
And they would be fully staffed and these would be people, not just poll workers there, um, you know, for the day, having people sign in. You'd be issuing ballots. You would be doing things that you couldn't just have someone in there for one day to do without, you know, a lot of...
Could those be staffed by?
They would have to be staffed.
Yeah.
And we would have minimal ones here because it goes based off of population and it would be really difficult to kinda decide where do you put that. I think we would only be required to have two, one of which would be my office. So where do you put the other one though, you know?
Right. Downtown Crescent City wouldn't work, but Klamath wouldn't be helpful to Gasky.
Or Gasky.
Right, right.
And you have to have, um, wifi connection because you have to be able to connect to the election management system. So there's a lot of required.
Okay. Um, that's all I have for elections.
Anyone else?
Oh, sorry. Um, for, so county clerk, recorder, public administrator. And you and I have had conversations where sometimes people don't even know what a public administrator does. So would you mind just kinda breaking down the differences between all these three?
Of all three?
Yeah.
Okay. So the county clerk portion of my job, um, we, I issue marriage license, um, and also perform civil ceremonies. We register notaries, uh, process servers, uh, professional photocopiers, legal document assistants and unlawful detainer assistants. So those are all registered through my office. Um, we also file the environmental impact reports. Uh, the recorder's side of the office, we record, um, and file authorized documents and maps. We preserve the official archives of legally recorded documents. Uh, we maintain all marriage, birth and death records for Delnor County and we issue birth, death and marriage records for Del, all of Delnor County.
And the public administrator?
Oh, public administrator, yeah. My favorite.
I know.
So the public administrator investigates, protects and administers estates of people who passed away in Delnor County and have no one or any known relative at the time who is willing or able to administer their estate. The process, it sometimes is very simple. Sometimes it's complex. Uh, it may include securing and protecting valuables against lost, um, seeing to the final disposition of the decedent's remains, locating possible next of kin, um, down to probating the estate if necessary.
And you said that's your favorite of them all?
It did, not at first. It was most depressing, but first good.
For sure, yeah. But probably most rewarding when you can have it all resolved. How, how many per year do you think on average do you have to? I mean, it seems sad, right? That there's no identified family. Is there, is that common?
Um, it's becoming more common. It's not so much now that it's no family. It's people are unwilling to, uh, step up and deal.
Okay. And so the cost for that is part of this budget, right? So the cost to be able to administer their, their estate, if there is an estate, that is a county cost?
Um, most of these, I'm not required to take them unless there's funds to, um, and I have a public administrators' trust account too, where there, there's the funds that I'm able to charge from the estates to put aside for, um, my costs.
Okay. Um, so for professional services, one year there was forty-three hundred and the next was close to fifty thousand. So what types of things come up and how do you anticipate those expenses?
Um, it's basically used to complete projects related to recording documents and all vital records. Um, we film, we're required to film, microfilm all, um, recorded documents and vital records and keep two copies of those, one onsite and one stored elsewhere. Um, so that's one project that is always ongoing. Um, when the new recording system or the recorder, recording system we used, they decided not any longer support, uh, counties for recording. Uh, we had to, um, get a new recording system. So funds, that was built up that year because we knew we were gonna need those and so, and so those funds, all the funds that go into prof, uh, professional services also comes from my trust account.
Okay.
So at the beginning of the year, how much I think I'm gonna use and then all that money I transfer over.
Oh, so from the, so that would be part of the intra-fund?
Yes.
Okay. Inter, intra?
Micrographics trust account.
Okay. All right. Um, so I have written that the property transfer tax seems to be a bit erratic. Um, is it calculated, um, how is it calculated and is it difficult to plan a budget around these kind of erratic numbers that come up? At least it seems erratic to me.
Yes. Um, so California Revenue and Taxation Code, um, calls for the payment of a county documentary transfer tax on the value of all real property of, um, which, when it's being transferred, ownership is being transferred. So, um, we all have the same, uh, tax amount. It's zero point one one percent of the value of the property, um, and then it's rounded up by five, at the next five hundred dollars and then the percentage applied. So it's really hard to, um, always know because you don't know what properties are gonna sell. I mean, you know if, um, things are moving or not moving, property's moving, but we've had a couple of big transactions of businesses selling. So of course the property tax on that is gonna be larger and brings a big chunk in.
Okay.
So it's really hard to say. I mean, if, when we're having a boom and you know property's moving, you know it's gonna be up there, but when nothing's really moving, you don't know what's gonna happen.
Um, so can you explain what recording fees are? And then this year you seem to have exceeded the projected revenue, so I'm curious of what trends are there to, uh, present that can justify that increase?
Uh, so recording fees are charged, um, anytime anyone records a document in the office. It's set recording fees. It's thirteen dollars for the first page, three dollars for each additional page for standard recording. There are certain documents that are a flat fee. Um, there's some we record for other county offices, uh, tax collector, uh, community development. Most of those are no-fee documents, so there's no fee charged. Um, it's hard to predict because again, depending on how things are going, you, if you're, if things are booming and you're recording deeds of trust, which are sixty, seventy pages, you're making a lot of money. But if you're recording liens that you don't charge for or, you know, notice of defaults, which are two pages, you're not making so much money. So it, again, it kinda depends on what's going on, if stuff's moving, if people are refinancing, those deeds of trust are really big. So you're making more money on those.
So, and then my final question, just like with elections, do you anticipate any budget needs for the next three to five years? Um, and I, I guess I'm, I say that taking into consideration kind of our aging population and this more and more that we're seeing people don't wanna step up and take care of their families, uh, estate.
I don't see anything, you know, um, my one thing is with my office is the only thing I would complain about, I guess, or to have a, is my space. I just don't have enough space. I'm supposed to be the keeper of records. I'm supposed to keep everything and I have absolutely no room. So it's really frustrating. It's that, you know, that's the most frustrating part of my job, I guess. At election time, we're moving things around and, you know, using the closed session room when we can and, and it's, it's no one's fault. It's just the way things are. And I've got stored, a storage unit and then I've got things over in archives. So it's just, you know, if I could be more consolidated, it would really, you know, we waste a lot of time moving stuff around, you know? But other than that, um, you know, uh, I would like to, at some point soon, start electronic recording and, um, also get going on a, like a Visa credit card payment system, which would be nice. You know, I've just always kind of, I hate the idea of charging somebody three, four, five dollars just to use their debit card.
Um, so the spaces is a good thing to talk about because I think you've brought this up before. Um, have, have you come up with any solutions for that? That maybe that would the board could, not right today, obviously, but to, in anticipated, like any?
I don't know what it would be at the, you know, I've thought about it, but I, I just, you know, we're, we work so closely with the other offices in here. I would hate to be in a different location because, I mean, I don't know how many times we send people over to tax collector. We send people over to the assessor's office to get something and come back and I hate, would hate to be running people all over, you know? So I think it's really vital that we stay close, connected to the other offices also.
I agree. But you have what, five, six people? And like you said, elections, you have a lot of people in those rooms and so is there ways that we could, um, take some of the, the documents and move them to a, a different location to free up some space or do you need those documents right there on hand?
Most of our, um, documents, all the older documents are all over in archives. They're not even in the office. The only thing we have in the office are the things that get used very frequently and, um, and now we don't even keep paper. Everything's digital.
All right. Thank you, Elise.
Any other questions?
Line has been answered. Thank you.
No other questions to the board? You get let out early.
Yay.
Pardon me. Thank you for your time.
Um, are we gonna have?
Oh, any public comment, sorry. Public comment. Seeing no public comment, you are free to go. Yeah, yeah, she's, she's heading for the door. We have nine minutes before the next presentation. Feel free. What's that? These are timed items. Yes, yes. Yeah, as it's, as it is genderized in public. Yeah, as it's as it is genderized in public. Very time and we'll be recommencing this special session of the Delaware County Board of Supervisors as we are going over the budget. And we are recommencing with Barbara Lopez, Treasurer, Tax Collector.
Hello. I'm ready for you.
Let's begin with your Treasurer 123 budget. Any questions from the board?
I just was hoping that you could kind of break down, just like Alicia just did, the difference. I mean, there's, there's three different distinct functions within your office.
Right.
So can you kind of break that down?
Sure, yeah. We're an office of three departments. We have Treasury, Tax Collector, and County Collections. So the treasurer is, I like to say, we're the banker of the county. We do all the banking needs for the County General Fund, non-general fund accounts, special districts, school districts. I'm also the Chief Investment Officer of the county managing $150, $150 million portfolio. So that's its own animal right there. We're also the tax collector. So obviously, we're collecting all the secured, unsecured, supplementals, delinquent property taxes. We do all the TOT collection and cannabis taxes, which we don't have any right now. And then County Collections is definitely a smaller department, but we bill and collect mainly right now restitution to victims. We also collect some county fees. We'll do dog license, parking citations, and some NSF cases periodically. But we also, I like to call ourselves in that department, our Revenue Recovery Department. That's where we do a lot of our unsecured collections, specialized collections, seizures and sales and such is under that umbrella as well.
Great. So is there any shifts that you can foresee in the future? I mean, you're a crystal ball, right? That we should be aware of the, in your funding priorities in for either, any of those three?
That's sort of an open question, you know. With my three departments, the treasurer is based on just the banking needs, right? So that I would say no. But as far as the investments go, if we are in a bad market, interest rates go down, everyone's going to see my investments go down and my interest go down. So that could be an issue, which we've all been there before. And then as far as the tax collection goes, I would say we're mandated to collect taxes, right? So if there's a major shift or any kind of recession or major property tax, you know, evaluation, that might affect everyone's budgets. But we're mandated, you know, we have to do what we have to do as far as collection goes. We don't have any realignment funds that could not get collected or state could not pass on to us, so.
It's a good question, though, Barbara, and I want you to expand on that some as it relates to TOT revenue.
Mm-hmm. So I don't know if you saw the budget, but this year, the 2324, excuse me, last year, 2324 budget came in at $925,000, the highest we've had. And I was shocked. I was absolutely shocked to see how much money we had come in for TOT. Every year, I feel like I budget low, but I am surprised at how much we're getting. I mean, at some point, we're going to have to flatline that. You know, we're going to have so many short-term rentals in our market that we might, you know, not see that big of a revenue source. Or if there's a complete ordinance change and we don't want to have TOT anymore, there's going to be an issue there. But we're definitely a great tourist destination and I would love to see it continue to grow, but I don't have a crystal ball kind of like what Alyssa said.
You don't have a crystal ball, but the board does. The board has this in their camp, so again, it's a good question to ask.
With that, though, can you explain why that TOT stays within your budget and doesn't go to miscellaneous revenue and expenses?
You know, I think it's just a matter of when we're doing the budget, I'm working on all the figures that I have ownership on it. In a sense, I know that program. I know how much money is coming in. It doesn't mean I can't jump into the 101 miscellaneous revenue and input that info. It's always just been in the tax collector's budget. We're general fund, right? So we're all in a big pot together. I don't say that that $925,000 is mine by any means.
No, and I knew that, I was just, I was curious because all the taxes go to the 101. This didn't, so I was just wondering when it was developed back, if it was just set up that way.
I think it was just set up that way. I've been, I've been doing the budget for, this is my 20th budget cycle. I've been with office for 25 years and it's always been in that budget.
But it still ends up in general fund, right?
Yes, 100%.
Yeah, well, obviously, I mean, so I was, but I was just, like I said, I was just curious because some goes there, some doesn't, so.
So just to give you a baseline on that, because that's an important statement you made, the $900 plus $1,000 in 2005 is less than 200. And so now it does make up a significant portion of our general fund revenue.
It does, yeah.
So 2005 is when we started?
Sorry, 2005 is when we started lobbying the Board of Supervisors for TOT revenue to be invested.
Oh, invested, okay. Okay, couple of questions with regard to postage. You have this as an expense, but do you use IT services? And if you use IT services, why wouldn't it be an interfund?
So it's metered mail. So the way IT works is we'll let them know, like, these are all of the tax collector bills, meter it, and we allocate that department and it gets billed to us directly. So any postage we have every month that's metered through IT is directly charged to my account.
Okay, I, you know, at some point, I need a tutorial on interfund cost plans and all that kind of stuff because I'm just confused why some makes it into a cost plan, some doesn't.
It's not a service, it's a, it's a charge.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, like a federal postage charge.
You have the HVAC, it was budgeted last year and not completed. Can you give us some reasons, obstacles that were in the place for that?
There wasn't any obstacles. I'll, I'll say that I probably didn't understand the process as much as I should have. We did just get the most recent charge of what it was going to be. It was later in the fiscal year. And I know at the end of our fiscal years, we don't like to do major asset purchases, so I just kind of held off. They threw it into my 2024 bud, 2425 budget. So now that I have a price, we'll get that started. I have to go through the whole purchase order process. And I didn't realize that a lot of that was on my, my shoulders to do. So it was just sort of a lack of knowledge on my part.
Yeah, I mean, I was just curious because, you know, HVAC systems within departments are very important. So I was just wondering if there was.
Yeah, this was mainly just, our office gets really hot and really cold.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
You can bundle up, but it's hard to get cold or, you know, to.
Yeah, exactly.
So with that, going back, I know I'm kind of bouncing here, but do you see any of the revenues from the actual property taxes? Or is it just one of those general fund things that just happens to go there?
Yeah, property taxes themselves are in the 101100 budget. But I have revenue in my line. That's delinquent fees that I collect for delinquent taxes and cost fees. So that's directly mine to help offset salaries and such. But the actual tax itself, that's allocated to general fund is in 101100.
You kind of touched upon this, but do you have any concerns about changes in revenue over the next three to five years?
Yeah, I kind of, yeah, it's sort of the same answer. I mean, if there was a major overhaul of the, you know, revenue taxation code and we don't collect taxes anymore, heck, yeah, there's going to be some issues. But, you know, we were in a major recession at one point and our tax, not sales tax, I don't deal with that, but property taxes were pretty, pretty standardized. TOT, a little bit less during the recession time, but nothing that was so out of the norm that it, that it caused issues for at least my office.
Okay.
Yeah.
You say for County Collections, they're collecting like restitution and different things like that. Does your, does your department receive any percentages of that? Or is it all just being distributed to?
Yeah, 100% of the restitution order goes to the victim. We don't, yeah, we don't get any of that.
But so I guess I always thought County Collections was more of like those delinquent people that weren't paying their fines and fees.
So back in the day, yes. The, I think Lonnie touched on this too, all the public defender fees, pure court fines, a lot of that stuff has been now considered uncollectible. So we've had to, I never wrote it off. I just have it in a pot that I can't collect. I'm hoping eventually we'll be able to collect it at some point again. Probably not, but and that's where we could get some of those admin fees added, but not for restitution.
Okay, yeah, that's, that was a shame, right?
It was, really.
I mean, that's a huge loss.
It is, yeah.
But you don't collect court fees of any kind? That would all go through the court?
Not any longer, no. As of 2000, it went back to the courts.
Okay. You have line 3, 90301, which is the treasurer cost. What does that, how does that originate?
So that is my time study, my time for investments. And before the investment apportionment process, there's a percentage that comes off the top that gets directly put into my treasurer's budget. I keep it as low as possible. I want everyone to be able to get their revenue for interest, so. But it is all time study and it's directly related to my time investing.
I have a question on here about the cost plan, but I'm going to skip it because unless you can answer it, because I guess, how, how, how do you? I understand the assessor, the auditor's office gives you whatever your cost plan was for two years ago. How does, how does that work for you? I mean, you just are, how do you like know that it's going to be coming up? Do you guys get notice that, you know what, you guys had a really expensive 2020 and so?
It's such a convoluted calculation. I just know that I'm a service department and I provide services for general fund and non-general fund departments. It's based on the costs to run my department. And then again, two years prior to that, I'm looking at it. So sometimes I'll look at it and say, this looks a little low and trying to think back what happened a couple of years ago, what, you know, what, what was? Did we have less staff? Did we have lower expenses? But yeah, it's, it's, I don't have a great answer for that.
It's a very complicated beast, but. How many tax bills did you guys set out?
All right, I have my stats here. Pardon? Let's see, we did. So lots of different categories. Secured taxes, we do our annual, are corrected in our late bills, a total of 18,124 bills. Unsecured, 2,407. Secured defaulted and liens, 1,114. Supplementals, 1,283. Liens, 544. So total notices of all those were 23,472. And we hand fold and stuff and mail them ourselves.
Okay, so perhaps we can get one of those machines that fold or?
I'm sorry, I have a folder.
Oh, okay. I don't want to take away your joy, that's fine. No, I get it. I mean, if you know Barbara, you know that she likes to do all that detailed work, but.
Well, it's expensive. We outsourced it for years and taxpayers would see, you know, a postage mark from Stockton and they did not like that. And I was spending thousands of dollars in professional services where my office could do it. We put on music and just, you know, it's what we do in the fall.
Okay, if you like it.
And there's a lot less errors, I will say, when we do it ourselves.
Really? That's interesting.
That's why I stopped doing it, outsourcing, yeah.
I think, other than, do you have any specific goals for any of these departments for the next year?
My main goal right now, just talking to the auditor, is our ERP system. I mean, that's coming up. We have to get that onboard. It's a huge undertaking for our office. It's going to probably require me to update some of my old legacy programs that IT provided for us, so you might see some of those come through later on. So hopefully, I'll keep my budget, you know, make sure that if we have to do any new systems that we're losing, that they're not super expensive. But I know like our TOT system will probably lose, collections will probably lose. I might need to get a small investment program that will lose.
What do you mean lose, I mean?
Because IT is amazing and they created some great in-house programs, but this financial program that we're getting is not going to be compatible. And some of the modules that I need, they don't provide. So I'm going to have to look kind of and see what I can get that's going to connect with that.
Okay, and your office is very instrumental in this, the new program as well?
100%, yeah. I would say between the auditor and myself are the two main offices that are putting this project together and IT. Let me not, I want to make sure that they get, they're huge too.
Obviously, yeah. Dan's probably watching, so glad you added that.
He's texting me yelling.
That's all I have. I just want to tell you, I do appreciate all the work that you do.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions from the board?
My question was largely answered with the HVAC system. I didn't understand that. I was thinking that it should have been kind of a building split up kind of HVAC system. Didn't realize it was specific to your office, so that.
Yeah, we have a lot of, a lot of windows.
Barbara is the only one that's paying for an HVAC system. So I appreciate that. But that was, that was all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any public comment? Seeing none, thank you very much. And we will take another break for 15 minutes until 4 o'clock.
And we will commence, bring it back into session for the Dunner County special, Dunner County Border Seuaride Special Budget Hearings. And we are welcoming the assessor's office and Jennifer Lopez.
So, no, Perry, sorry.
Had Lopez last time, Perry this time, sorry. Sorry, forgive me please. And as we, you can please begin with your budget for one to one, please.
All right. Well, good afternoon. I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have. I did get a couple in advance. I don't know if we want to kind of start with those and then just as there might be other ones along the way or just kind of take them one by one, whatever you prefer.
You may start as the others just kind of describing what your assessor does.
Oh, what we do, okay. Well, the short of it is that the assessor is responsible for creating the property tax assessment role every year. A lot of people think the only thing we tax or appraise is transfers through real estate agents or new construction, but there's kind of a lot more to it. Our office handles all change in ownership transfers, so whether it be 100% or a partial interest, so somebody gives up a portion of their ownership, we have to look at reassessing that as well. So it's not just what you see on MLS type of a thing. We do date of deaths. We handle, you know, joint tenancies, name changes, trusts, all that kind of stuff that comes through, legal entities. We do have all the permits that we do each year, but it's not just the new ones that are issued, it's all the carryover from the years prior. By law, we have to assess on lean date, which is January 1st each year, anything that's under construction that hasn't been completed and received their supplemental tax bill. So where we might see, you know, six or 700 new building permits, we actually have more than 1,000 or whatever's been carried over that we have to monitor each year. We assess the decline in value program, so anything that, you know, current market value is less, it's on the tax roll, we have to address that when we're aware of it. And we also do every single personal property manufactured home on lean date every year. We do mining claims, we do possessory interests, we do Section 11 properties, which is property that's owned by the government outside of its jurisdiction. So like city owns a little bit of property that's outside of city limits, that actually does get assessed, but it's a certain calculation process for that. We do all of the business property, we do pleasure boats, we do documented commercial boats, we do aircraft. We do all of the mapping for parcel maps whenever we get, you know, boundary adjustment splits, new subdivisions whenever they're created. So that workload, you know, can vary quite a bit depending on what's going on. You know, we could have 50 new parcels all of a sudden just from one project, or we might have 12 different projects, but they're each only one or two parcels. So that ebbs and flows quite a bit. We do all kinds of exemptions, so we have homeowners exemptions, which we do get reimbursed from those by the state, so those aren't necessarily coming off the tax roll, there's a process for that. But all of the other forms of exemptions, that's just a loss as far as tax revenue is concerned. So those would be our veterans exemptions, all of the nonprofits, the schools, the hospitals, any religious exemptions, the cemeteries, lots of low income housing, museums, and anything else that they might come up with along the way. But all in all, it equates to, you know, currently, we run numbers over $2.8 billion. And, you know, of course, what we see from that is ultimately what Barbara can collect, you know, and how that follows through to the end. But big numbers that our staff of nine is pushing through each year and trying to do it as timely as possible.
And your staff of nine, is that full staff?
That's our full-time staff, yes, nine including myself.
And those positions are what?
So we have the assessor, the assistant assessor, we have three property appraisers and one fourth property appraiser that's assigned to all of the like unsecured role or business property that we, you know, so all those, the boats, the aircrafts, the businesses, the manufactured homes, all of that stuff. We have our appraiser technician, she's responsible for getting all the numbers in the system, making sure we see our supplemental funds come through. We have our assessment analyst, they do all of our reports, all of our exemptions, they ensure that we're, you know, getting that tax money on the tax roll, getting it delivered to the auditor. We have our property transfer mapping specialist, and she's kind of a two-in-one. A lot of counties have these separated into different positions, but we've got it combined just because the mapping portion, it's labor intensive, but it's a smaller portion of what we do. But that's not to say she doesn't do a lot. This last year, we had almost 5,000, or sorry, 4,700 recorded documents. And so whether or not those equate to an actual reappraisal, she's got to filter through all of those and decide, is it 100%? Is it 27.3%? Is it, you know, and push things forward for the appraisal division to work. So those are the nine positions that are in our office currently, and we have had those same nine staff members for 39 years. So we haven't, we try to do, you know, what we can with what we have, work harder, or work smarter, not harder. And so aside from part-time temp help, we've kind of kept our staff at nine for decades.
Any questions on the budget?
Mr. Cochran would be proud.
He would.
39 years is probably when he was started. So, so my understanding is that you have asked for a reclass for one of your positions?
That's correct, yeah. So this is for that fourth appraiser that I was talking about that does the personal property assessments. By law, assessors are supposed to complete mandatory audits on business properties. So it's not that they're not, you know, paying their taxes and not getting assessed, but cyclically, there's a formula where we take half from the upper group, half from the lower group, they're on a four-year cycle. We actually have to, you know, look through their books, do a site visit, and just kind of ensure that the reporting is accurate. And that is something, that's a position that we haven't had since 2012, that was reclassed by a prior administration. Personal property, we have to, we have to do the assessments for it. There's a lot of files for personal property, it's pushing, I think, close to 2,000 between everything, and that's just on the unsecured side. But it equates to about 5% of the tax roll. So in years past, when we've been understaffed, or, you know, we're almost, we're over a year behind on appraisals because we've had up to 75% vacancy in our appraisal division. At one point, we had one property appraiser for the entire county. It's kind of a weights decision, and it's like, all right, we're going to put all of our apples in this one basket because I want to get 95% of the tax roll, and the 5% is still getting taxed, we're just not looking through people's books, you know what I mean? They're self-reporting to us. And so now that we're caught up and we've turned over, you know, clean, timely rolls the last couple of years, no corrections after the fact, fully staffed, with committed staff of the nine of us, there's three of us that have been here for more than 10 years, three of us that are going to be hitting our 10-year mark in the next year, and the other three, I think the shortest amount of time they have in with the county is six years. So everybody's very invested, we have a really good team right now, and so it's a really good time to kind of take this next step, add that extra work because they can handle it and because we can do the training for it. And that's what we want to take advantage of. In years past, the state didn't really have an alternative, you had to either already have an accounting degree, either a degree or pass like a civil servant test, but now they've devised an exam that meets their qualifications that our appraisers can study for and take. And so that's what we'd like to do now. The individual who is filling this position has been with us for several years, they're very good at what they're doing, but now we need to add that extra step to make sure we're getting these audits complete. And so that's kind of the purpose of the reclass. The reason why you haven't seen it yet, even though this was part of the original budget proposals from this past spring, we turn over the tax roll in June and early July every year. And unsecured property taxes go out right at the beginning of August and they're due within 30 days. And so for this particular person, this is like peak, you know, work period for them. So we wanted to let the dust settle, give them time to, you know, get a little studying under the belt, and then go ahead and take the exam, and when that's accomplished and everything's aligned, then we're going to go ahead and do the reclass. So we didn't need funds until later in the year, closer to probably October, November, and so you'll be seeing that, I think, probably in the final round, but that's what we're hoping to do. And historically, for Dunner County, the auditor appraiser, because it is kind of, it's an additional certification on top of the regular property appraiser classification, it was one step higher than a regular property appraiser. So where a property appraiser might be a 41, they would be a 42. For the numbers with the current budget, it's like a 2.3% raise, it's, you know, 100 bucks a month, 120 bucks a month. And we do get a part of our cost to create the tax roll is reimbursed through SB 844, so that'll get offset slightly as well. So that's what we're looking at right now, it's probably about 100 bucks a month increase due to adding, or due to this reclassification.
So that goes right into my next question, what is SB 844? I mean, if you could just break that down and how it produces revenue?
Sure. This is actually, I mean, it's more heavily calculated in the auditor's office, but in a nutshell, it's the mechanism that allows the county to collect some of our reimbursements for the cost of creating the tax roll. So it's based on payroll expenditures, you know, not everything is allowed, and we can't, we try to predict it the best we can, but we never know, you know, if there's going to be an early retirement, if there's going to be a vacancy, you know, what is the cost actually going to be? It does fluctuate from year to year. And that is a number that's actually given to us by the auditor, but we kind of collectively work together, like, you know, hey, do you guys see anything coming, coming down the pike that might affect us all, so we can kind of come up with something as accurate as possible. But in a nutshell, it's our county's share of the cost to implement the tax roll. And you'll see that the assessor, auditor, and tax collector each get a portion of that revenue.
Yeah, I did notice it, but I only asked it for yours, but that makes total sense, I get that. I'm back up to, on line 10115, or 155, you've consistently asked it for, asked for $10,000, and then this year you didn't. Is there a reason why you admitted that request?
So that would be, I think, was that our part-time temp or is that the overtime?
Professional services legal.
It's part-time temp. So, okay, so when we, we had a really large vacancy rate for a while, and during that time, while we were trying to onboard new employees and then go through the proper training, we started to fall behind on our property appraisals. And it kind of got to a point where it was like, I don't know if we're going to be able to get this caught up unless we take an additional action. So the decision was made, you know, let's go ahead and see if we can find some part-time help to get this caught up, but the problem is, it's hard enough to recruit somebody to do the job and then to find somebody that has the qualifications and wants to come in and work, you know, part-time. It was really, really difficult. So we were extremely fortunate that one of our retirees had offered to come back. And so for a while, we were asking for part-time temp funds to help cover that, and we were actually able to get a second person onboard who was a private fee appraiser for a while. And within that, you know, those couple of years of kind of attacking that work from both angles with the part-time temp and the full-time, we were able to get everything caught up without corrections necessary. So now that we're, we've caught up, the last couple of years, we're fully staffed, I don't need to ask for that, I don't foresee needing to ask for that money next year, so that's why that's it.
So the city doesn't have their own assessor's office, correct?
Correct.
So you do the assessments for the entire county regardless of the jurisdiction?
Correct, yes.
So let's take Chipoli, for example, brand-new business coming in, you go and you assess the business, and then who collects on those taxes then?
Yeah. So, you know, the kind of the process, like, right now, it's in construction phase. So the appraisers are going to go out there periodically, see what's being done, track the progress, you know, there's worksheets that the state supplies, you know, is the foundation complete? Is it, you know, go down your checklist, and they're going to keep on with that construction. If they complete before the calendar year's over, we put a final assessment on it, a supplemental assessment gets issued, everything gets put on the tax roll. If it's not done by January 1st, they're going to tax what's there, even in its incomplete state. So right now, what we're, you know, putting on the tax roll is the construction portion of the process. Once they're up and running, or if they have anything that's considered business, personal property, could be equipment, you know, if it happens to be owned by the company that's onsite, we'll be adding that as well. So when the business is up and running, anything that's taxable, it's not inventory, you know, all of their refrigerators and, you know, any kind of equipment that they use, that gets added to the tax roll as well, fixtures, all that stuff. And ultimately, what we collect as a county for property taxes, it gets distributed, you know, not only to us, but all the special districts. So that breakdown of the percentages that everybody receives is, that's going to go out to all of those folks as a certain amount each year.
Okay.
So the city does, you know, they get their share.
Okay. I mean, we do the work, but so we certainly get a percentage of the work that's being done before it gets distributed out.
Right, right.
Okay. So some major challenges or potential risks facing your department that could impact future revenue? Do you have any concerns or anything?
Yeah. As a service department, I mean, it's hard for us because we don't get to really see much of the revenue that we create that goes into the general fund. So as far as that revenue was concerned, the two biggest challenges that would be affecting that bottom line would be ensuring that we are fully staffed to do the work to get that number created, and the market, which we don't have control over. So there have been years where we've seen negative growth on the tax roll, you know, that bubble bursts and things kind of come down, just the same as we've seen increases go up. And unfortunately for us, it doesn't necessarily mean, you know, less work when the market goes down. In fact, a lot of times, it means more work because now not only we're doing assessments, we're doing the Prop Eights and then, you know, kind of trying to answer more questions for folks that might be coming in for that process. So right now, we're, you know, as far as the numbers we're seeing, because we work behind, you know, what's actually happening in the market, we're reactive to the process. We're sitting pretty steady right now, so we're hoping for the rest of the year, we kind of see this year what we saw last year. But with anything, we kind of know the ebb and flow is coming. We can only hope for two steps forward, one step back, that's kind of what we're, you know, it's like, even if it falls back a little bit, it's not enough to, you know, completely to lose that revenue, so still ball.
So you, at the end of the year, your budget year, you sent us an email with some real proud numbers on that. Do you want to kind of explain that, you kind of touched upon it, the 2.8 billion? Are there other metrics in which you celebrate within your department of things that are getting completed and?
Well, yeah, so we're, it's, it's nice to see healthy growth in the community, but, you know, the bottom line is, we're not revenueers, we do the work regardless of what the actual numbers result in, whether or not the county gets, you know, more revenues to work with or not. For us, it's, it's, you know, we do the numbers, but it's more a matter of, do we get the work done on time? Are we responding to the public, you know, appropriately, timely? It's really pretty nice when we can hear, thank you, when people leave the office, I mean, doing taxes, we're not, you know, the most loved department, so. The bigger part of our success, I think, in addition to putting the numbers through timely, is just making sure that we can do what we can, you know, for, for community education and assistance, because property taxes, it's a pretty weird dog, so there's a lot to it.
So oftentimes, we only see the ones that have gone, that they want to appeal, you know, when we come to the Board of Equalization. Do you have quite a few people that want to appeal, that maybe you guys work out something internally or?
Yeah, so we always recommend, it's, it's an informal review, so they don't, they don't get to preserve their rights if they just come straight to us and then they don't fill out an appeal application. But a lot of times, it just boils down to understanding of the process. You know, we'll, we'll have somebody come in and they may be upset about an assessment, but we haven't actually done their appraisal yet because they just bought it, you know, two weeks ago, and depending on timing of the year, depending on what bill they actually receive, it's, a change may be coming, but it just hasn't happened yet. Another component is, a lot of times, you know, if we get, say, something is sold, like, between buyer and seller, you know, and there's not a lot of details provided to us, and we're looking at it thinking like, oh, man, kind of seemed like you got maybe a little bit of a deal on this property, but we have, we can't always use purchase price, we have to use current market value. So we're looking at it, trying to get as much information as we can from the property to, to, to get a accurate value for it. Maybe it was, you know, trashed inside and we didn't know about it, and there's a lot of deferred maintenance that needs to be done. And so when they come in and we finally are able to, you know, contact one another and get that information, we have time to adjust those numbers. Okay, I didn't know that, you know, let's reconsider. So we do get a lot of that as well. You guys see just very, very few actually move forward through into the appeal process.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you so much, Jennifer.
The only question I have is under your 20232, your legal services allocated no, no funds for this year. You had some, some funds last year and the year before, so I was just determining if you're just hopeful or just, you know?
I wasn't, I wasn't going to go there.
I was.
Oh, I was like going, come on.
What the answer is, is she doesn't anticipate?
But you know what, let's just air it out.
She doesn't anticipate having to sue me this year, that's what it is.
We, we did need to follow through with a RIPS petition through Superior Court, but that has been finalized and is completed, and it's not something we foresee doing. It was the first time we did need to do that, and I mean...
So you don't, you just don't see it coming again?
I hope not. But yes, that's the reason why, is I don't, I don't foresee needing to go through that process. Of course, you know, future is the future, but at this point in time, I don't believe so.
Any other questions from the board?
Just real quick, you, you real quick went by having to do Prop Eights. What is that?
Okay, so it's, the value and decline program, it's often known as Prop Eight, it's the mechanism that legally allows us to change your assessment on the tax roll to lower than your Prop 13 base. So the law is that, you know, you're supposed to, you know, Prop 13 that was passed in the 70s allows you to pay on your factored base your value or current market value, whichever is less. So we don't see it very often, it, or I should say, we didn't see it very often, because the premise behind it is kind of like, well, there's always going to be inflation happening, and so you bought your house now, but in a few years from now, it's probably going to be worth more than what you bought it for. So the value's going to kind of keep going and exceed that 2% inflation factor that the state applies. But when you see market, extreme market conditions, it can have an effect on the actual value to where you're overpaying, even though years have gone by. So when I first started here, there was less than 100 per appraiser that they kind of had to review each year. And then when the market went up in like 2005, 2006, and we were seeing really high purchase prices, the values, you know, were inflated, then that crashed. And so now, folks that may have, say they paid, you know, $400,000 for a house in 2005, and a few years later, it's only worth 350, the state's not going to have us collecting taxes on that, you know, 400,000. They want us to recognize that it's worthless on the open market. So there is a process where we can compare the two. We peaked at around 1,700, and we're down to 225 right now, so we're, it's pretty manageable at this point.
Any other questions on the board? Opening it up for public comment, any public comment? Seeing none, thank you so much for taking time and coming, appreciate it. And we will reconvene at 5 o'clock.
Jennifer, I'd just like to say thank you for being as responsive as you are and...
4:30, 4:30, sorry.
I think it's awesome, and it really is, it makes it really easy to understand, so I just wanted to say, I appreciate that.
You know, it's sometimes hard to put it in layperson's terms. Took me 18 years to know what I know at this point.
I think you do a good job.
What background do you have? Were you like, prior to being an assessor?
No, I don't know any assessor that whose dreams were to be an assessor.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
It's not a very...
You don't go to school, but no, but like...
No, I, I was interested in the appraisal, new construction, you know, that kind of thing, just to get out and see all of the beautiful homes that were being built, it's kind of a new thing to be able to do and to get to know the... But my background is actually in education, so graduate of Chico State, teacher.
You can tell that by just how you talk in your presentation today, so that makes total sense to me.
Yeah, so, but I think it helps because with what we do, trying to find ways to educate, I feel like helps people understand our process, and maybe makes it so we're not so much the bad guy, you know, it's a little more understandable. So we're really going to try and focus this next year on, you know, pamphlets or workshops or anything to kind of answer large groups of questions at a time and get information out there so people know, you know, what's available to them, homeowners exemptions. We kind of want to go to, like, like the, the home show, you know, if we could even get a little booth there and, and we'll, we have remote access, we can save you homeowners exemption property, like, you know, hooked up with that, we can save you 70 bucks a year, you know, that kind of stuff. So we're hoping to do a lot more reach out.
Oh, I hope that that comes to fruition, that would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.